of Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Vidwer is present. Aldo Helia is present. Aldo Bennett will be a little late. Aldo Conklin is present. Aldo Curry is present. Aldo Duncan is present. Aldo Evers, sorry, Aldo Evers, I apologize. Aldo Evers is present. Aldo Field is present. Aldo Figueroa Cole is present. Aldo Govindarajan is present. Aldo Harrington McKinney is present. Aldo Knox is present. Aldo Latimer Burris is present. Aldo Madison is present. Aldo Martinez Rutherford is present. Aldo Miazzi is present. Aldo Rumel is present. Aldo Tischler is present. Aldo Verveer is present. Madam Mayor, way of quorum.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a special order of business, an appointing resolution, item one, Legisstar 81389. President Curry, would you like to make the motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. On recommendation of the Common Council Executive Committee, we are recommending to appoint John Uguir as alder for District 19 to serve until the spring 2025 election. And for those of you to reference, the resolution is in your emails sent by Karen at 6:17 this evening.
Motion. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. On item one, are there questions? Is there discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, record unanimous vote in favor. Congratulations, Alder John. He's here and you're here. If you want to just come first to the podium and get sworn in?
Yes. And just for my benefit, it's Uguir?
Uguir.
Uguir.
Don't look at the spelling.
That's fair. Thank you. You're not required to raise your hand. You may if you like. Do you, John, Uguir solemnly affirm your support in the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and the Charter of the City of Madison, and will perform the duties of alder in District 19, City of Madison, to the best of your ability?
I swear.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Please, you see it right over there.
We'll stand informal while the alder finds his seat and gets settled. And I will move on to opening remarks. As usual, I just ask us all to remember that we are here to do the business of the people of the City of Madison. I'd ask that we try and do it with kindness and respect for each other, to refrain from using profanities, whether that is alders, staff, or members of the public that are with us. Our next order of business is an honoring resolution. It is item two, Legisstar 81617, celebrating February 2024 as Black History Month in the city of Madison. And we will turn first to Aldo Harrington McKinney to begin the reading.
Whereas, to commemorate and celebrate the contributions to our nation made by people of African descent, American historian Carter G. Woodson established Black History Week nearly a century ago. And...
Whereas, the event was first celebrated during the second week of February 1926, and subsequently expanded to a month in 1976 during the nation's bicentennial. And whereas, Black History Month is an opportunity to reflect on the complex history of the United States while remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead. And...
Whereas, African Americans continue to serve our city, state, and the United States at the highest levels of business, government, non-governmental agencies, and the military. And whereas, the theme of Black History Month for 2024 is African Americans and the arts, celebrating and focusing on the ways African American artists have used art to preserve history and community memory, as well as for empowerment. And...
Whereas, this year's theme of African Americans and the arts explores how, in the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression, the African American influence has been paramount. And...
Whereas, for centuries, Western intellectuals denied or minimized the contributions of people of African descent to the arts, as well as history, even as this artistry in many genres was mimicked and/or stolen. And whereas, despite these efforts to silence and appropriate their art, artists and cultural movements such as the New Negro, Black Arts, Black Renaissance, hip-hop, and Afrofuturism has been led by people of African descent and set the standard for popular trends around the world. And...
Whereas, it is imperative that, in order to be truly inclusive and welcoming place, all Madisonians learn about and support the work of Black artists, past and present, throughout the city and beyond. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the Madison Common Council recognize and celebrate February 2024 as Black History Month in Madison and around the United States.
Be it further resolved that the City of Madison acknowledges the significance of Black History Month as an important opportunity to commemorate the tremendous contributions of African Americans to the history of Madison and the United States, and encourages public officials, businesses, educators, community, and all Madisonians to observe this month with relevant programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Be it further resolved that the city encourages the celebration of this month by inviting all Madisonians to learn more about African Americans and arts to be better understood, appreciated, supported, and centered varied and rich histories and experience of Black Americans and how they have shaped our nation.
Be it finally resolved that understanding, appreciating, and celebrating the diverse histories and experiences of Black Americans does not stop the end of Black History Month, and argues Madisonians to learn about and appreciate the rich heritage and contribution of African Americans throughout the year.
Thank you, Alders. We will take that as moved by Aldo Harrington McKinney and seconded by Aldo Conklin. Is there any discussion? If not, having been moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. And we will move on to item number three, which is Legisstar 81631, commending and recognizing the members of the Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee for their dedicated service to the City of Madison Parks Division. Aldo Verveer?
Thank you, Mayor. I move adoption.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Aldo Verveer?
And before I recite this honoring resolution, I'd like to ask by unanimous consent that your honor and the entire city council be made cosponsors of the resolution, please.
Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the clerk will make it so.
Thank you. It's my honor to read this resolution commending and recognizing the members of the Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee for their dedicated service to the City of Madison. Whereas, Law Park sits on the shores of Lake Monona, and the Parks Division had scheduled a master plan update for the park. And whereas, John Nolan Drive was scheduled for reconstruction, led by the Engineering Division, adjacent to Law Park and extends the same shoreline along Lake Monona. And whereas, the mayor, Parks Division, and Engineering Division agreed that developing a master plan that would extend from Law Park to Olin Park encompassing the John Nolan Drive causeway would create the opportunity for a cohesive, linear park that would benefit Madison's residents, businesses, and visitors. And whereas, to attract national attention to the project and assure a high-quality design for the plan area, the Parks Division established a design competition to select a design firm. And whereas, on February 1st, 2022, the Common Council authorized the formation of the Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee, a 13-member panel to select the design challenge winners, and subsequently identify a preferred master plan option for recommendation to the Common Council. And whereas, due to the significance of the project, the Parks Division developed an outreach and application process to select a broad representation of community members to serve. And whereas, on April 19th, 2022, the Common Council confirmed the appointment of 11 of the 13 residents to the Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee. And whereas, on May 10th, 2022, the Common Council confirmed the mayor appointment of two of 13 residents to the Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee. And whereas, the following residents served on the Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee in the associated positions. Chandra Miller-Finnan as a Board of Park Commissioners member, Rahel Desalane as professional civil structural engineer, Claire Schaefer-Oleschak as Madison Park Foundation Board Member, Judy Karofsky as Monona Terrace Community and Convention Center Board Member, Alan Arndsen as Friends of Nolan Waterfront member, Erin Williams as Board of Public Works member, Rod Shukla as Community Representative, Natalie Erdman as Community Representative, Janice Rice as Community Representative, Zhang Wang as a Community Representative, Andrew Stevens as a Community Representative, and Maria Sabrito as a Community Representative.
Whereas, the committee elected Alan Arndsen to serve as committee chair, and Maria Sabrito to serve as vice chair, both of whom served admirably. And whereas, the committee met a total of 38 times throughout its service. And whereas, the committee members reviewed 13 submissions to the requests for qualifications, evaluating the proposals based on the Design Challenge guiding principles, which are the master plan vision, racial equity, and social justice, sense of peace, community connections, lake access, sustainability, public space, public art, education, economic opportunity, and design for philanthropy. And whereas, the committee members selected Agency Landscape and Planning, James Corner Field Operations, and Sasaki as the design firms to contract with and enter the design challenge, which gave the design firms four months to engage with Madison residents and refine their master plans. And whereas, the committee was committed to high ideals of public engagement and hosted five community events with hundreds of residents in attendance. And whereas, the committee held stakeholder meetings with community groups to hear technical information and perspectives on their constituents' needs and uses related to the plan area, which gave members additional information to support their evaluation of the master plans. And whereas, the committee evaluated the three master plan submissions and scored each team on five primary categories: alignment with the master plan guiding principles, overall project vision and cohesion, response to and engagement with the public input, project feasibility, and the overall quality of master plan materials. And whereas, Sasaki consistently scored higher in the committee's review and the public survey results, notably in community outreach and feasibility. And whereas, on May 10th, 2023, the committee accepted the scoring results which resulted in Sasaki to be the winner of the design challenge. And whereas, as winners of the design challenge, Sasaki was awarded a contract to continue to refine their Lake Monona Waterfront master plan in preparation of submitting a draft master plan to Common Council. And whereas, the committee members continued to review and evaluate the refinements to the master plan that was designed by Sasaki. And whereas, the committee will complete its service upon the submission of the draft Lake Monona Waterfront Master Plan to Common Council. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, the common council, the Board of Park Commissioners, and the park superintendent commend the entire Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee for their dedicated service, and be it finally resolved that the mayor, the common council, the Board of Park Commissioners, and the park superintendent express their deepest gratitude to the Lake Monona Waterfront Ad-Hoc Committee members for their service to the City of Madison and its residents.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. I believe we have a few members of the committee here. If any of you would like to come up, and I believe we have at least a few copies of the resolution, and receive. Please. I imagine a photo might be taken.
Do you want me to...
Please.
Just really briefly, on behalf of the committee, and you can tell what an impressive group that five of us here tonight, with the weather, what it is. But on behalf of the committee, thanks to Mayor Rhodes Conway, Alders Verveer and Evers, and this entire council for your commitment to this project and this project. I'd like to thank Park Superintendent Nep, Assistant Superintendent C.J. Ryan, and especially Project Manager Mike Stern for their dedicated support for the committee and its process. I'd like to thank all the folks at Sasaki who truly listened to the community and came up with a spectacular plan for a world-class park connecting downtown and the South Side with Lake Monona that will be first introduced here tonight. And finally, I want to thank the thousands of members of our community who participated and provided input into this process and plan. Everyone worked really hard and cooperatively to put in place a truly inclusive and transparent process that's resulted in the plan being introduced tonight. And now, we start the hard work of funding and building the park. On behalf of the Friends of Nolan Waterfront, which will, its name will change shortly, on whose board I serve, we look forward to partnering with the city to build a world-class lakeshore park that welcomes, embraces, and inspires all members of our community and visitors to our city. Thanks again, and I'm really excited for what the future brings with this. Briefly introduce Erin Williams, Judy Karofsky, Janet Rice, and Rahel Desalane are the committee members.
Thank you. Thank you all for your service. Very much appreciated.
Copy of the resolution. It's a long one, so there are two pages, not just one. But it's a copy that appeared to be shared with you all. And I think Aldo Verveer and I will get in the back. The committee can be...
That's right.
One more? Thank you again for your work and your service. It's a very exciting project. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection. Thank you all again. Our next item is a presentation, item four, Legisstar 81616, from our state government affairs liaison, Nick Zavos, who will be talking about the current state legislative session. Nick?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk to you all. My name is Nick Zavos. I'm a contract lobbyist for the city. I've been doing that for about two years. Prior to that, I, under different administrations, was in the mayor's office, and among other things, lobbied for the city. So it's kind of nice to be back in the room. I was saying earlier, first time behind the podium here as opposed to back there. It's a different perspective, but I appreciate you taking the time. I thought I would just kind of do two things. One is kind of give you a brief summary of where the legislature stands right now. Number two, kind of flag some of the bills that are floating around, being talked about right now, and then really leave some time for you all to ask some questions. So I'm sure you all know the legislature operates on a biennial calendar. The legislators come in in the January of the odd year, spend about six months working on the state budget. That's when you all heard the debates and the changes to the shared revenue, for example. About midway through the year, then after the budget is adopted, they shift to individual policy bills and work on those until the spring of the even year. After that, they adjourn those. There is then a series of kind of what are called study committees where they just take on kind of discreet issues and bring in experts and legislators to kind of try and tackle some of those issues with the hope of bringing back legislation the next session. Where we are now is kind of coming to the end. Much like the Christmas music on the radio season, this legislative session slowly creeps back and back and back. So at this point, what we're looking at is the assembly is probably going to be adjourning in February, and the Senate soon after in March. So we do have some sense of kind of the bills that are remaining that might be under consideration. I thought I might just flag a couple of them that might be of interest. I don't want to drone on and on, just giving you a list of bills, but I thought I'd flag a couple of them. And I'm always happy if you hear of any, you know, let me know, and I'm happy to kind of talk you through them. There's a bill on urban towns. It would create kind of a new type of town. It would create kind of a new type of town, towns that meet certain criteria, namely density, population, a few other things, would then have a new set of powers. In Dane County, Madison specifically, the town of Middleton would qualify as an urban town, and if you'd qualify as an urban town, you would be exempt from extraterritorial zoning, extraterritorial plating. You would be able to ask the city for water and sewer service, and as long as the city had capacity, the city would have to agree to it. It would also make annexing land into the city for those towns a little more difficult. This is an issue the League has been working on for a number of months, trying to stop it. Obviously, it's not a promising bill for cities generally. It had a hearing a couple of weeks ago. Obviously, for the city, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Middleton. So one of the problems with the bill is it's not clear how that would be handled, whether the new law would supersede the provisions in the intergovernmental agreement or not. And then obviously, there's a lot of issues with requiring sewer service to be provided simply on demand. What I've heard from the League is that the authors are hoping to introduce an amendment that take out the sewer provisions and make some other changes. That hasn't been introduced yet, but it's something I've worked with the League on, and I know the League is kind of very actively working on right now. On a more promising note, there's a bill on electric vehicle charging that should be making its way through the legislature. It's passed. The Senate should be passing the assembly, and essentially, it changes the way you can charge for electricity. Currently, only utilities are allowed to charge for electricity on like a kilowatt hour. So essentially, what you have to do is park, and you're paying for the time in the space. As a condition of getting all of the federal money that should be coming to the state and to the city, you have to make a legislative change to allow this. The state of Wisconsin is one of only two states that's yet to accomplish this. So I'm assuming this is going to sail through. There are a couple of limitations on municipalities. We cannot own or operate a Level 1 or Level 2 charger that's offered to the public unless that electricity is offered for free. It's not an ideal provision, but given kind of this asset making of legislation that's in there, and that looks like that's how that's going to pass and ultimately be signed. There is a bill on billboards, kind of that's a perennial issue that's come up. Boy, I even worked in the legislature as a nonpartisan attorney before, and these kind of issues have been coming up ever since then, many, many years. They're looking for kind of more rights and privileges essentially when DOT projects affect billboards. What the bill would do would kind of grant them more right to kind of move the billboard on the current property, and if their view is blocked, be able to raise it. That's another issue I've been working with the League. I know the League has worked a fair bit on. They're hoping to have an amendment on that, but similarly, that has not come out yet. Maybe I'll just leave it there. We did talk about, there was a salt issue. It's kind of interesting. Well, just since we talked about that earlier, there's kind of an interesting salt issue. And I think why it's kind of neat for the city is because this whole Saltwise program started in the city, and it slowly moved, it moved over to the sewer district, it's now at Carpsy. But there is kind of a neat proposal. We started the Saltwise program where we provide training for salt applicators to kind of how much salt you actually need to apply, given the conditions. We have a lot of private applicators go through the process, and the question is, how do you get them, more people to go into the program and to kind of follow those guidelines? And for them, the big issue is liability. And so what the bill would do would say, if you go through this training program and document applying salt in accordance with your training, you'd be exempt from liabilities from slip and fall. That was some great work by someone at Carpsy who got that introduced. It's now been passed through the Senate. I think it's had a hearing in the assembly. So you never know, but it's kind of an exciting, promising bit of legislation. Maybe instead of joining on, maybe I should just kind of halt there and just see if there's anyone has questions, or if there's kind of a different direction you might like me to take the presentation.
Thank you, Nick. Alder Rama?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Nick. Nice to see you again.
You too.
I have two totally unrelated questions. One, can you update us on the PFAS legislation?
Yes.
And then, secondly, anything coming with the general topic of bodily integrity, you know, control over our, you know, identities, and you know, anything of abortion rights, that kind of thing?
Sure.
And stuff, you know, any of those things where they're trying to mess with people?
Yes. So back to front, there have been a number of those, you know, the same ones you've seen probably in the news that kind of are everywhere across the country. You know, you can't participate in a sport unless you participate based on the gender, on your birth certificate, things like that. I don't know that any of those have progressed much further, such that they would get to a gubernatorial veto or something like that. The abortion issue just came out, I think it was in the last couple of days. Essentially, what the proposal would do, the state doesn't have any kind of referendum process, but what they would do is create a referendum on a 14-week abortion ban, but it would only go into effect after a referendum and if the referendum passed. The strange thing is, that bill has to pass before the referendum. So essentially, it would have to pass the legislature, and the governor would then have to sign that bill to create that referendum process. And from what I understand from the governor, as he's indicated, he's not going to sign the bill. What was the first one?
PFAS.
Oh, PFAS. So PFAS is, I think, so just by way of background, I'm sorry, by way of background, what the legislature did is kind of split the PFAS issue into two pieces. So they created during the whole budget process, a big chunk of money and set it aside, and then said, we'll come back to this. And now when we, now the budget's passed and we move on, we kind of, then we'll create a bill for how this money is spent and the regulations around that. There's a lot there. Essentially, what it boils down to is there's one really good piece, and there's one piece that people really don't like. The good piece meaning funding for helping clean up for municipalities and others. The problem is, it's also paired with limitations on what the DNR can do in terms of testing and things like that. I don't know, that one has been kind of sitting for a while, and I don't know its status right. I mean, I know it's sitting, but in terms of the progress, what its outlook is, I'm not sure where the, no one really knows where the governor is either. Obviously, he has some similar concerns. So that one is sitting, is a shorter answer.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Viver?
First question is about one of the things you talked about, the EV charging. So how does that, if that were to pass, how does that impact charging facilities on city property, like in parking structures and so forth?
So parking, city parking structures should be fine because those, there's no one here to correct me, maybe Mike. My understanding is those are all owned and operated by MG&E, so those should be fine. Yeah.
Okay. The second question relates to a conversation we were having at Finance earlier this week about the ballot initiative on prohibiting external funding for election security. Could you just talk a little bit about that and the impacts that that would have on municipalities if that were to pass?
Yes. That's a good one. I have not paid a ton of attention to that one. I know the gist of it, which is, this is kind of a road that this legislature's gone down a fair bit, when they can't get legislation through that they like because the governor might sign it, is they can propose constitutional amendments that then go to the people to vote on. This is a proposal inspired by the code funding that Mark Zuckerberg gave different communities, Madison included. There's been a lot of, we'll get into what there is. It's been inspired by that. The proposal is to not allow any kind of private funding of elections. It has passed, so it should be coming to the voters, but I don't, I'm happy to get back to you on that one as to what election, April? Okay. It's coming in April. As far as the implications, there are a number, and I don't know them off the top of my head, but it does sweep more broadly than just that. And I don't know, maybe Mike has looked into it more, but I'm happy to get back to you more on the kind of details of the implications of it.
Attorney Haas, do you want to add anything?
I think the mic's on me.
There you go.
Okay. The most immediate impact would be that the funding, the private grant that the city has received would need, under our current plan, would need to be spent before April. And the city would not be able to receive any private grants in the future. We talked about it at Finance, I think, a little bit, that the state does not direct any specific funding towards election administration. All of the additional funding over the past five to 10 years for elections has come through the federal government. And of course, elections, the cost of elections continues to grow. So there's a couple of proposals before you tonight regarding the private grant that the city has received and to authorize spending that. But that would be the impact going forward, is that that would not be an option in the future.
Thank you. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Nick. This City-County-Schools Collaboration Committee used to be called the Education Committee. One of the priorities that we've been working on and decided was significant and important for our community was addressing the inequities that have occurred since the state took away the funding that the schools have for drivers' education to help our high schoolers get driver's licenses, driver's license education. It's our understanding that there is a bill before the legislature, and there's some interest in being able to address this and provide some funding for the schools to be able to reintroduce this on some level. Do you know anything about this, or can you comment on it, the status and where it's potentially going?
I can't. It does ring a bell as a bill, but it's not one I paid a ton of attention to, but I'm happy to.
Maybe circle back and get back to us and see what we can do to lobby ourselves and advocate for it before the state. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Alder. Alder L. Burris?
Yes, thank you for coming to speak to us. We've heard your name, at least some of us have, as we're new in council. I had one question, and then I kind of just had a comment, and I'll phrase it as a question. Could you explain to us what you do as a state government affairs liaison, just some of the things that you do? And then how do we as legislators stay up on things that affect us and go about advocating for issues that affect us on the city level, recognizing that Attorney Haas and his entire department stays up on it, and they're very busy answering all of our questions all the time? How can we educate ourselves, get a little more familiar with what you do? Thank you.
Yeah. So in terms of what I do, I mean, I start by kind of, I guess I get started kind of chronologically, which is monitoring all the legislation that gets introduced to the legislature. Usually, I'm kind of able to catch those actually before they're introduced, when they're being circulated for cosponsorship, and then try and send them to Sam and the mayor, and then if I know, the kind of the relative, relevant department head, to kind of get their comment and their sense of whether this is a, you know, good, bad, something to pay attention to, not important, et cetera. From there, it's really just a question of kind of taking direction from the mayor's office on kind of what direction they'd like to go, whether it's like, this is something we would like to register in support of, add our name to, whether this is problematic, or whether there's a bill maybe we could just kind of get some sort of tweak or small change to, to make it a little bit better. So there, it's kind of context, sorry, context-specific in terms of what the bill might be. In terms of staying informed, I mean, I guess I would say the League is a great resource. They have, maybe you're all probably already on it, which is that they have kind of their Capitol buzz and Capitol updates. They try and send out pretty regular things on kind of list of bills that are relevant to municipalities. I think, you know, certainly, you all are far better messengers in the legislature than I am. So certainly, if I were to ever know of some issue where any of you is particularly interested in it, I'd, you know, be happy to keep you updated, and I think, you know, you as messengers, elected officials are just going to be far, far better messengers. So if that were to be the case on anything, I'd certainly be happy to kind of work together and see how we can make that work. Am I, is that kind of capturing?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. I'd also add that we're planning to have Nick give regular updates throughout the year. Haven't quite figured out the cadence of them, but this obviously is popular, so we'll continue to do it, and as needed, we can do written updates as well. Alder Viver?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome back, Nick. Thank you for joining us tonight and for your continuing service to the city. The League has been mentioned a couple of times tonight, and I was curious if you could be a little more specific as to what your working relationship is with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Do you work regularly with their government affairs team? As you know, there, we had a bit of a rocky relationship last year with the legislation that you referenced in your opening remarks relating to shared revenue. Do you work regularly with them? And if you could just characterize in some detail how your relationship is?
Yeah, I'll just take that last part and leave the first part alone, maybe.
There you go.
Yeah, I work very regularly with them, very closely with them. On, you know, all of the bills I listed off there, I talk to them quite regularly. They've worked a lot on a lot of these bills and have contacted me either directly or through Sam and the mayor, has contacted me on kind of what the city's position and want to be accommodating to our position. Yeah, I mean, and there are other bills, I'm just kind of glancing at some of the bills I mentioned. There are certainly other bills, too, that I've worked on that are, I know that all your eyes will glaze over as I try and talk about them, but they do have an effect on the city. And yeah, I've spent many hours working with the League's legislative team.
So they are in pretty good communication with you?
Yes, absolutely.
You would characterize that?
Yeah.
Okay. Was that particularly Tony or Katie or?
It's more, it's been more Katie recently, but both, I've definitely talked to Tony. It just so happens, I think, the way they have it divided up there, that I've worked with Katie.
I see.
More recently on the town bills, is an issue about contracting, a couple others, and I think they just happen to be her. She's gotten, she's doing those bills as opposed to the other ones.
Well, that's very good to hear. I think we got their attention, that we felt that we haven't received the service perhaps we should have in terms of their advocacy at the Capitol. And then relatedly, do you work closely with the Dane County Cities and Villages Association and Forbes, or does your work not with them as much?
It's somewhat with them, you know, I mean, I think it kind of depends on the issues. Because that's a coalition, I think Forbes views it as, you know, unless the coalition takes a position, he's not going to take a position, he takes a direction from him, from them. But I do work for Forbes a fair bit and try and keep him in the loop. If I'm seeing an issue that I think of as of some importance to the city, I'd flag it for Forbes, so he can maybe bring it to the Cities and Villages Association so that they can take a position, which has happened on a couple of those different issues. So that was a long way of saying yes.
That's great. Well, that's very encouraging to hear on both fronts. So thanks again. Good to see you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wiheli?
Thank you. Thank you, Nick, for being here and just sharing your work in the Capitol. My question is similar to Alder Viver. The League and the city of Madison is kind of, I see as a triangle, which is like partnership, collaboration, and communication. So I'm wondering what role, as the common council, we can have to advance some of those legislative policies, and how you can be able to communicate to us so that we are championing some of your policies that you are talking with the League.
So just to clarify, is it more the council getting involved with the League or with the legislature, or was it?
No, with you, like I see as a triangle, which is the League of the municipalities, you as the legislative person that are more advocating for the city of Madison, and then we as policymakers, because some of the agenda items are very important to us. And unless we know what you're working on, then there's no way of knowing it. So I'm wondering, what's the process when you find out to champion a specific legislative policy?
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess my first thought would be maybe, and I defer to the mayor, I mean, in terms of maybe giving more regular updates about the issues, I don't want to, feel like I'm just repeating myself. I do know that the League does a nice job of kind of summarizing the bills that are out there. I think, you know, when I've done this previously, I did try and be cognizant. I know you have, you all have a lot on your plates, and you do. you all have a lot on your plates, and you do a tremendous amount, and so there is a degree to which I don't want to flood everyone, I didn't want to flood in the past, I didn't want to flood everyone's email box with, for example, emails about, you know, indemnification provisions and other contracts and things like that that aren't of interest.
So I might suggest that two really good sources of information of just in general what is going on at the legislature that's potentially of interest to municipalities is the League's updates, but in particular, the Dane County Cities and Villages update does a really nice job of summarizing, you know, sort of bills and where they are in the process. So I would suggest that if you're not already subscribed to those, you might want to. It's a great way to just, it's literally one line, like what the title of the bill is, and if you think it's of interest, then you could flag that for my office, my office could flag it for Nick, get you more information, where are we in the process, what do we think about it, you know, would it be useful for you to get engaged with our delegation, you know, with the committee, if it's getting a hearing or, you know, whatever the appropriate process would be. But certainly welcome input from the council if there are things that you see happening in the legislature that you're particularly interested in. Of course, as we already mentioned, Nick will give more regular updates on the things that he's working on already, and, you know, pull folks in if it would be appropriate, if, you know, if we're taking a strong position on something, and it would be helpful to have anybody in this room, you know, give testimony or speak to legislators or whatever it might be.
Yeah, and the only other thing I guess I would add is reaching out to the League, and then I know the League is always, 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 you know, eager for, as I was saying earlier, you all are the absolute best advocates that there are, and so they're always interested in engagement from elected officials, so reaching out to the League directly, I'm sure they'd be happy to hear from you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel.
Thank you for letting me have a follow-up question. I know the state government doesn't, is not going to deal with legislative maps as they're getting redrawn, but, so say the Supreme Court says, here's your new map, does it go through a process at the state level, or is it just, you know, can you tell us any more about, or at least me, more about what we can expect with this, this process?
Yeah, take it with a grain, some with a grain of salt, but, so my understanding right now is the Supreme Court has solicited map proposals from all the different groups. I think the legislature may have even met today to vote on their proposed maps. And my understanding is, again, not to keep putting Mike on the hot seat here, but the legislature, that the Supreme Court's just going to pick one of, either pick one of those maps, and it will be imposed and not go through a legislative process, or it'll craft one of its own, in which case, again, it would not go through a legislative process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Another Alders in the queue. So Nick, anything that you'd like to say to wrap up?
No, thanks for the time. I hope I covered it, it wasn't too dull, and it's nice to see you all.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on then. Are there any disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Then we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Consent agenda is moved with recommended action listed for each agenda, each item on the agenda, including public hearings except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which Alders have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. The following items are supermajority, meaning that they will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 54, Legislative File 81305, creating a section of the Madison General Ordinances entitled City Boundaries to be part of the chapter entitled Alder Districts and Wardes, annexing nine parcels of the 5,000 block of North Sherman Avenue to the 18th Alder District, and creating a section to annex the property to Ward 161, and assigning a temporary zoning classification of Temp A District. 14 votes are required, this is a report of the Plan Commission. Agenda item number 64, Legislative File Number 81016, amending the Madison General Ordinances related to salaries of officials to update salaries for Alders. This is an item referred to the meeting, 15 votes are required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item number nine, Legislative File Number 81024, creating a section of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 33 West Johnson Street from urban mixed-use district to planned development and general development plan district, and creating a plan to approve a specific implementation plan. Report of the Plan Commission and Planning Divisions, recommended action is to recommend to council to adopt with conditions, and please note the conditions are detailed in the Plan Commission materials. Agenda item number 35, Legislative File Number 181377, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a purchase and sale agreement between eminent development corporation and the city for acquisition of property located at 1202 South Park Street for youth-centered housing development, and authorizing execution of a loan agreement for up to $2 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated by the common council for the project. This is a report of the Community Development Block Grant Committee, and recommended action is to adopt the substitute. Agenda item number 54, which was read above in the supermajority, the recommended action, or it's a report of, yes, the report of the Plan Commission is to recommend the council to adopt. Agenda item number 77, Legislative File Number 81628, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute contract amendments utilizing federal emergency rental assistance funds to multiple local organizations to sustain efforts to prevent evictions and promote housing stability for households in Dane County. This is introduced for new business, introduction of new business for referral without debate by Mayor Rhodes Conway, recommended action is to introduce substitute. Agenda items excluded by either request of Alders or two speakers registered by 6:30 on January 23rd. Agenda item nine, which was read prior regarding changing of zoning in District Four, we have speakers registered. Agenda item number 64, which was read above as well, regarding updating Alder salaries, requested for exclusion by Alder Field, and speakers registered. Items introduced from the floor are Legislative File Number 81592, updating the city's policy for the assessment of sanitary sewer improvements located within the current and future boundaries of the City of Madison, introduced by Alder Rumel, to first go before the Board of Public Works on January 24th, return to the common council on February 13th. Legislative File Number 81593, amending the 2024 Capitol budget of engineering and determining a public purpose and necessity in adopting a relocation order for the acquisition and release of land interests required for the construction and maintenance of improvements for a public street, introduced by Alder Latimer-Burris, to be go before the Board of Public Works, January 24th meeting, Plan Commission's February 5th meeting, and return to common council at its February 13th meeting. Legislative File Number 81599, determining a public purpose and necessity in adopting a relocation order for the acquisition of land interests required for utilities, utility materials handling site for the handling of disposal of excess cut and sediment materials located in the City of Madison and Dane County, introduced by myself, to go before the Board of Public Works, February 7th meeting, Plan Commission's February 26th meeting, and returning to common council at its March 5th meeting. Legislative File Number 81635, approving contract amendment number one with Masabi LLC to include non-competitively selected service installations and changes to equipment quantities for the new 60-feet-foot electric bus fleet, introduced by Alder Martinez-Rutherford, to go before the Finance Committee of January 29th and return to the common council at its February 13th meeting. Legislative File Number 81653, adopting the Lake Menota, Manona Waterfront Master Plan with several referrals, first to the Board of Park Commissioners, April, this is not in order, sorry, to first be referred to Transportation Commission's meeting on January 31st of 2024, Madison Arts Commission of February 12th, 2024, Manona Terrace Community and Convention Center meeting of February 15th, Urban Design Commission meeting of February 28th, Plan Commission meeting of March 25th, Board of Public, Board of Park Commissioners April 3rd meeting, and returning to common council on April 16th. Legislative File Number 81655, revising City of Madison leases on land being used for row crop agriculture, introduced by Alder Evers, to be before the Madison Food Policy Council of February 21st, returning to council March 5th. And Legislative File Number 81656, amending the land banking fund policy to add urban agriculture as an appropriate secondary use for properties acquired through the fund, introduced by Alder Evers, to be before the Madison Food, Food Policy Council of February 21st, Economic Development Committee of February 21st, and return to common council on March 5th. There are no agenda items with corrections.
Thank you, President Curry. Are there any additional exclusions at this time? Seeing Alder Wiheli?
Item 36.
Item number 36. Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yeah, I don't know if this is just an error, but it has District Nine, Alder Latimer-Burris, and I'm not District Nine, and I don't think that this is mine, but I want to double-check that.
Sorry, Alder, can you give us an agenda number?
Sure, I'm sorry about that. Legislative File 81593.
Thank you for flagging it. Any other notes or requests for exclusion? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I rarely do this, but I'm just now noticing that my name is not listed as a cosponsor for Legislative File 81653 about adopting the Lake Menota Waterfront Master Plan. Pretty sure I told staff I wanted to be added, so I'd like to make that official. Thank you.
We'll add you, Alder. Add me while you're at it. Any other requests? All right, seeing none, let me run through that again, just the unique items, recommendations that are different from what's printed on your agenda. Item 35, the recommendation is to adopt the substitute. Item 54, the recommendation is to adopt it, note that it's a 14-vote item. And item 77, the recommendation is to introduce the substitute. We have three items excluded from the consent agenda. Item nine, where the recommendation will be to adopt with conditions. Item 36, and item 64, which is a 15-vote item. We have a number of introductions from the floor, which I will not read all of, and that is the list. Should I go through it again? No, looks like we're all good. If so, then President Curry, a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Move to adopt consent agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. We'll move on to public comment. And our first item with public comment is item nine, which is creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning at 33 West Johnson Street. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Andy Inman of Middleton, Wisconsin. Do we have Andy either in the room or on the Zoom?
Yes, I'm here if you can hear me.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I should have been registered as in support, not wishing to speak, available to answer questions, so I will pass unless there are questions.
Thank you very much. Andy is the only person registered on this item. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Andy. And we'll move on then to item 64, which is amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to the salaries of officials to update salaries for Alders. On item 64, we have two registrants wishing to speak, starting with Christine Amay of District Six, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Do we have Christine? Does not look like we have Christine in the room.
Mayor, I don't see Christine in attendance.
All right. Then Bonnie Rowe of District 11. Don't see Bonnie in the room.
Mayor, I don't see Bonnie on Zoom either.
Okay. Alder Tischler?
Yeah, Bonnie Rowe is in the Midvale Heights Neighborhood Association meeting, so she'll be joining in a second. She just texted me.
Well, there's, there are no other registrants wishing to speak on this item. Alder, are you asking us to pause?
I think she just raised her hand.
Oh. Yes, all right, so we'll go to Bonnie Rowe from District 11.
Thank you, sorry about that, it took me a minute to log in, but I actually just registered to speak to ensure that this agenda item was excluded from the consent agenda, and I think it has been. I would just like to register my opposition to 60% raise at this time. I don't think it's popular among a lot of your residents, plus adding the managerial rate increase seems like a lot. I really do appreciate the work you all do, and I know that it's a big commitment and that you're all committed to serving our city. Each of you ran free of money as a prime motivation to serve, and here we have the most diverse Madison Common Council in history, and that is really a significant achievement that we can all be proud of, and at this pay level as well. As you all know, the city budget has a very serious structural deficit that will really hit us in 2025, just next year. You pass the budget and you hold the purse strings, and likely this looming deficit will require furloughs, maybe layoffs of your fellow city employees, and definitely departmental cuts above and beyond what we've seen. Some departments have been hit really hard already. I know the referendum was not specific to this agenda item alone, but definitely related. The idea of a professional council was soundly defeated. This role was not meant to sustain anyone, it's a part-time role, and more than that, a service. Things are about to get really lean, and I ask you to say no to agenda number 64. It's not the right time, and it's not the right amount. Thank you for your time, and have a good meeting.
Thank you. That's our last registrant wishing to speak on this item. Are there any questions? If not, I believe that is all we have for public comment tonight. So we will move on to item number nine, which is Legislative File 81024. It's creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances to change the zoning of property located at 33 West Johnson Street. On item nine, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions- Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Are there questions for staff on Item 9? Is there discussion on Item 9? Seeing none of either, is there objection to adopting Item 9 with conditions with a unanimous vote? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of Item 9. We'll move on to Item 36. Item 36 is Legistar 81084, approving a certified survey map of property owned by Wingra Park LLC located at 1609 to 1613 South Park Street and 710 West Wingra Drive. On Item 36, President Curry?
Move to adopt.
There's a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Questions on Item 36, Alder Wiheli?
We have the staff do a presentation. There are a couple of emails that we received from residents.
Yes, we have Director Stoudt here. Go ahead, Director Stoudt.
Thank you, Mayor, and Alder Wiheli. I do not have a detailed presentation, but I wanted to address some of the questions that I think were circulated to alders. One of them was why is the certified survey map coming to the council directly without having first been reviewed by the Plan Commission? So first of all, I want to mention that this certified survey map involves the creation of a few lots along South Park Street and redefining the boundaries between the lots. It's associated with a recently approved conditional use. It was approved by the Plan Commission several weeks ago now for basically a rehabilitation of an existing former fast food building to accommodate a new coffee shop with a drive-through. And so when the conditional use was approved at the Plan Commission, one of the conditions of approval was that a certified survey map outlining the way the properties relate to one another be created, and that's a really typical cleanup that occurs related to most redevelopments within the city. And so the certified survey map is before the council this evening, really, you know, something that's basically administratively reviewed. You'll see in the Legistar file associated with it that there are several conditions of approval for the certified survey map from our city engineering colleagues, traffic engineering, water utility, and others. So that, that's why it's before the council alone. It simply wasn't, it wasn't provided at the time that the conditional use was approved by the city's Plan Commission. So it's being, being provided now as a condition of approval to that conditional use. Importantly, there are some easements that are still being worked on by the applicant to ensure that there is adequate access to the property from South Park Street and not just Beld Street on the east side, and those easements are in the works. They are also a condition of approval of the approved conditional use on the site, and they will be coming through separately, as is the strong preference of our colleagues in city engineering mapping, that those easements be worked on in a more detailed way and not simply noted on the certified survey map itself. So those are in the works, and I'm, I'm happy to try to take any questions, but just wanted to provide a quick verbal overview.
Thank you, Director Stoudt. Alder Wiheli, a follow-up?
Yes, thank you. Heather, could you also speak to the, the drive-through nuances? I see there's been some kind of inconsistency in terms of whether it goes to right or left, so if you can talk about more about the, the drive-through and its complications.
You know, I'm not well-prepared to talk to all of the details of the drive-through and its complications. That was really handled by the Plan Commission several weeks back. I am aware that there's a concern related to vehicles exiting the site onto Beld Street on the east, and that there are, in the works, like I mentioned, there are easements in the works among the properties right in this area to ensure adequate access to South Park Street, so that those vehicles on Beld Street are less apt to, they're less apt to make that decision. I don't know if there are any colleagues from engineering mapping or traffic engineering here this evening that, that might be able to further address those issues, but, you know, from, from our perspective, the Plan Commission did dig into this with a lot of advice from traffic engineering and engineering, and there are still a lot of conditions of approval that are being worked on consistent with the Plan Commission decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor, and hi, Heather. Just real quick, as a follow-up, some residents in District 13 of the Bay Creek neighborhood became concerned that the absence of specific reference to that, to the easement and the certified survey map meant or implied that the developer was able to decide whether or not they wanted to implement that easement from South Park Street. Can you disabuse my residents of this notion and reassure them that this is not up to the developer, but that was part of their conditional use permitting process? Thank you.
Yes, thanks for the invitation to do that here. So yes, indeed, the applicant is still working to, to meet that condition of approval related to the, the easement that, that you mentioned, separately from the certified survey map that's before the council this evening. And in fact, that separation between these two legal documents, the certified survey map and the detailed easements, is strongly preferred by our colleagues in the city engineering mapping section. Rather than getting lost in a certified survey map as a simple note, they prefer that a far more detailed set of easements be worked on and recorded along with, with the properties. And so that condition is indeed something that has to be met before staff will sign off on and, and let the, the new coffee shop with drive-through move forward. So thanks for asking that again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Heather, for your time earlier today when I asked you about this topic, when I started to see the emails, and I asked you if it would be worth considering referring it back to Plan Commission's for sort of a more public look, and can you share with the council what your response was?
Sure, thanks, Alder Rommel. Yes, so the Plan Commission did already act on this and had a, a long list of conditions of approval that must be met before the drive-through is, is constructed. The certified survey map before the council tonight is one of those, so you know, we can check that, check that off the list. The easements that have been the focus of concern are, that's another condition of approval that the Plan Commission already has on this conditional use moving forward. And so I think that if it were referred back to the Plan Commission, I would, I would fail to really see the purpose of that since the Plan Commission has already conditioned their approval on the creation of this easement, and we know that the applicant is currently working on the creation of the, the easement to meet that condition of approval. I don't think the Plan Commission has much more to add than the way that they've already, already acted several weeks ago.
Thank you, Director. Mayor, may I ask the city attorney a question, and I'll give her the floor? So I just, when, when the mayor was introducing this section, she mentioned that Number 64 is a 15 vote item, but this is just wanting to call out a two-thirds vote for suspension of rules, and can you just talk a little bit about that, just so everyone's on the same page?
You remember what the requirement is for suspension?
Well, it's, we're recommended to adopt under suspension of MGO 2.055, which I went and looked it up, and it requires a two-thirds vote.
Right. Suspension of the rules requires two-thirds vote, and in this case, the reason for that is we're suspending the rule that requires the item to be introduced at one meeting and voted on at the second meeting, so that's the rule that's being suspended.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue with questions. It has been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, it has been moved and seconded, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Alder Rommel?
I wish to be recorded as a no vote.
Alder Rommel will be recorded as voting no. Alder Knox?
I'd like to be recorded as voting no as well.
So then is there? Alder Latimer-Burris, we're getting to where I'm going to do a roll call. Alder Latimer-Burris?
I would just move to abstain.
Alder Latimer-Burris will abstain. With two noes and one abstention, is there any further objection? Seeing none, then we'll record a unanimous vote with the exception of two noes and one abstention. And Item 36 will pass, and we will move on to Item 64, which is Legistar 81016, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to salaries of officials to update salaries for alders. On Item 64, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item from the consent agenda because I can't support it as written. Last week, at the request of several alders, including myself, the city finance department staff shared informational materials with alders that included estimates of the city's future budget deficits, with the 2025 budget deficit currently projected to be 27 million, and we have some work to do to figure out how to close that gap. Since we don't yet know how to close that gap, and this task is going to be challenging and require us to make some tough choices, given the outlook, I can't support the motion for this large of a raise for the next council of alders.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitterver?
I think we skipped questions for staff.
We absolutely can go back to questions for staff, Alder.
I was just wondering if Director Schmidicki could say what percentage of the annual budget this would represent.
Director Schmidicki?
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Vitterver, the amount of the increase associated with the change in alder pay would represent about five one-hundredths of 1% of the total 2024 general fund budget.
Thank you, Director Schmidicki, thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. Would now be an appropriate time to introduce a substitute?
It would.
I move a substitute that will be hitting your inboxes within the next 10 seconds. This substitute is, understanding everything that is going on with the budget, we have a pretty large deficit coming up, and still acknowledging that the work as alder is very intensive and takes a lot of time and effort. The, the amendment in front of you is a step down significantly by several thousands from the proposed main motion, I guess. It will bring the rate to about $20 an hour. All of the information is there, also including what is currently like in ordinance, so a alder will make roughly $21,000 as compared to the $12,000 currently. And this will raise the total annual pay from about $340,000 for all alders to about $486,000, and that should be in your inboxes. That's all, thank you.
Right, so that's a motion, is there a second? Alder Madison?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Alder. So moved and seconded by Alder Govindarajan and Madison, a substitute, if it's all right, I will refer to it as the $20 an hour substitute, just so we can keep things straight, and... Can I have the clerk just remind us of the clerk's email address that you would like to receive things at?
Oh, that's a really good question, actually. Let's go with just licensing@cityofmadison.com would be fine. That's licensing, L-I-C-E-N-S-I-N-G, at cityofmadison.com. If you're going to send amendments, that's just fine, or if you happen to have my personal email, that's fine too. Either way, I would get on.
Just a reminder to include the clerk, so that they have it as part of the official record. Thank you, Alder Verveer, for forwarding. All right. Alder Evers? On the amendment.
Mayor, I was going to speak on the main motion, so let me gather my thoughts about the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other alders in the queue wishing to speak on, no, that Alder, he continues back on line, on the amendment, so Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I got my thoughts together rather quickly, so.
Point of order, are we going to have questions for staff?
Alder Bennett, if you have a question for staff, please raise your hand.
Oh, I see.
We're, we're into an amendment now.
I'm sorry, I guess we were just cruising along so fast, I did not realize that we moved past that point, sorry about that.
It's perfectly appropriate, if you have a question, don't hesitate to ring in. But Alder Evers has the floor. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to address the residents who may be listening, and my colleagues, and thank everybody who has expressed opinions about this in the past, and realize that reasonable people can disagree. As many of our residents have pointed out, we do have budget challenges facing us in the future, and there's also some concern that somehow or another city services get lost in the process and that they have suffered over the years, although I think it's questionable as to whether or not that is actually the case. But I'd rather speak about some general concepts, general background principles. There's been some reference to a referendum in the past. That's not particularly relevant to the discussion today, because that referendum had to do with a recommendation of the TFOGS Committee, the Task Force on Government Structure, that had recommended that we move to a full-time common council. And so what the vote was on that time was a rate of pay commensurate to full-time service. It is true that was not supported. And I've heard in previous debates, my colleagues have brought up that I did not run for council with any financial considerations. Money did not factor in at all, and I appreciate that. That was not the reason why I ran either. I don't think anybody runs for elected office on this level and expects to profit from it. However, there is always the option, any of my colleagues at any time, for whom that is stridently the case, to work out a deal with the city treasurer and the clerk's office to return their pay. If this is a strongly held commitment on your end that money and financial considerations do not factor in at all, you do not have to take the pay. Secondly, my colleagues would be perfectly in order to advance a motion that we reduce alder pay, if you feel that is too high, given our other challenges. But there's a biblical principle at play here, and that is a laborer is worthy of their hire. Find reference to this in the Gospel of Luke and the first letter of Timothy, first epistle to Timothy. And so the question that becomes, what is the worthy pay for an alder? And I think one of the benchmarks that we could, if we decide that, that we should be paid, then the question is what is the worthy pay? By the way, that concept of, you know, labor is worthy of their hire is part of, I think, you know, English common law, and it enters into, it's part of English literature, there's a reference to it in Chaucer in the 14th century, in Chaucer's Canterbury Tales. So asking ourselves, what is a worthy, what does it mean for us as labors? What is our worthy hire? And my suggestion is, as one possible benchmark, would be looking at what the hourly rate of the lowest-paid city employee, and the lowest-paid city employee is just under $20 an hour. So this, this substitute, which by the way, I would not have been in support of the main motion, that was too high of a raise. It wasn't consistent with, it didn't respond, it was disrespectful, I think, of the concerns of our residents under the considerate, the other challenges that we're facing. But it is not unreasonable, in my opinion, for us as alders to be paid at a rate commensurate to what the lowest-paid full-time city employee makes on an hourly basis. So that's something to consider. The impact on the... The impact on the budget from this would be rather small. But consider that what it would allow currently, this, what we get paid requires us, most of us, to have another source of income. Many of us have full-time jobs, and if we don't have full-time jobs, we have retirement income. It is difficult to find a part-time job that pays sufficiently, that allows you to do this as a part-time, as just 20-hour-a-week employment. You usually have to, Mayor, have a full-time job, which impacts, I think, on the ability of people to run for office and to effectively serve. Think of the structure that we have here. We have a full-time executive leader, our mayor, with a full-time staff of four, five deputy mayors, and we have a part-time council, yet we're the legislative body. We are to be an effective check and balance to the executive branch. But often, we are struggling to keep up with the agenda and the work that is required, and I think that has something to do with structurally, including how much we get paid. I would ask my alders who have voted against this and been strongly opposed to simply ask them themselves the question, are we as laborers worthy of our hire? Should we be paid about, on an hourly basis, roughly what the lowest-paid city employee makes on an hourly basis? And is that a reasonable amount, a reasonable condition of our employment? And with that, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Pastor Evers for your sermon, and I would like to echo a lot of what he said. I would also like our constituents who feel that equity and inclusion and diversity within our government, within all of our structures, is important to consider that when you pay under what we are getting paid currently, it is hard for people to justify running. No, I did not run for money. I'm an artist, for sure, have never pursued money. I am a comedian, so we get paid less than most artists. It is hard for me, under this current pay rate, to completely be engaged with the city when I have to think about how much I have to work or find a way to make my basic needs. And I am here fighting for everyone in our city to have their basic needs met. Everything I do is not about all of the people that are resourced, and I love all the resourced But I'm here for those who are having a hard time and can't think about running for office because they are trying to make their bills, they're trying to rush from taking their kid to school to work to their part-time job, they're going home after their children have gone to sleep, they are not able to spend time with their family because they are struggling to make it just through a day. So, why would they run for office to make a change when they can't make enough to take care of their family with it? I'm not complaining. I am finding a way to make it, do, I'm white, I get a lot of, you know, benefits from just being white. But I want everyone who sent us emails to consider, one, that there's a human being behind those emails, reading those emails. And some of the words I read this week break my heart for our world, not, you know, like, I expect to be treated with just as much respect as anybody else. I'm very saddened by the way we have had, things we've had to read this week. I'm even more saddened about the fact that we have people who wish that they could run for office, who wish that they could engage in the political system to make a difference for everyone who are not able to. And if they go about it and get this, they're going to get emails like that. I understand, we all have opinions, but we have got to be nicer to each other, and we've got to value people's time and respect the work they do. I am in support of the $20 amendment. I think it's an acceptable amount, and I would be grateful for that every day. But we are not voting on this for us right now. We are voting on this for the future of our council, who are going to work for you every day, to do what they can to make your life better. And I get, I get it, you're not feeling it. We're not feeling it. But we also, on this council, are impacted by the decisions we make. When our taxes, when your taxes are raised, our taxes are raised. So, please, consider those points, and consider supporting those of us who are working. Like, good, I don't need all the praise, I get all the praise I need, I've got friends. But I want you to know that we are here, and the words that we've had to read are, feel, are personal, and it breaks my heart. Thank you very much, that was a lot of time. I'll bring jokes later.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share a couple thoughts and a couple facts, just to bring some facts. Okay. So, these are more bullet points, so forgive me for them being a little out of order. But in short, if I looked at the makeup of the common council, you know, as it is today, I believe there are seven black women and two black men, you know, all identifying as black. And so, that's very, so every time someone says, they talk about the diversity of the council, you know, celebrating the diversity, you know, we haven't had raises, but yet we got this diversity. As a black woman, that very much stings, whether it's in an email, or it's a speaker, or I'm reading it in a newspaper or something, that very much stings because what it tells me actually is how little the speaker or the writer, whatever, how little they actually value diversity. Because when we celebrate diversity, diversity also comes with not just equal pay, but like the correct pay for a person of color's work and their value. So, to tell, so I really would prefer people not necessarily always use this celebrating diversity as a reason that we don't need to pay folks, but to say, because we understand how little folks of color are actually valued, especially in their pay, that until we get that far, we actually don't value them. So, there are seven black men, seven black women and two black men on this council. So, here are a couple facts. So, this first set of facts come from the update on the Race to Equity Report, and I'm pulling this right from the Cap Times latest article on reporting on that update. But there's, the headline starts with, "Black Income Still Fall Short of Others." So, in Dane County, the median annual income was $75,000 and some change for all households from 2016 to 2020. However, the median income for black residents in Dane County was only right under $38,000. The median income for white households was right over, a little over $80,000. So, again, valuing diversity, like devaluing our black residents, for example, already shows up in our income disparities. So, black residents in Dane County are also four times less likely to own homes, no matter their income level, and continue to experience poverty disproportionately. This report indicates that black residents are 2.7 times more likely to live in poverty than their white counterparts. The report also recommends that local employers raise the floor in hourly wages in Dane County and commit to a living wage. I do believe that $20 that was proposed gets us closer to that. That developers continue, of course, to build high-density affordable housing, and that the state government enacted fully refundable targeted child tax credit that prioritizes young children. Then, the Wisconsin Public Radio gives some updates around statistics across the state. And again, it looks at black women, where black women are only earning 59 cents for every dollar in the state earned by white men. And remember, there are seven black women, I believe, on common council today. It also goes on to say that meanwhile, Wisconsin's wage gap is 36 cents for Native American women, 25 cents for Asian women, and 21 cents for white women. So, there's both a gender equity issue and a racial justice issue, and I think that is also represented, if you just look at the makeup of the council and where these statistics put each of our likely incomes at. So, Keep Working Wisconsin Fact goes on to share that nominal wages grew in 2022, but the wage growth was not fast enough to keep pace with high inflation. The median in 2022 was down to 2202, but the decline brought a decade of wage growth to an end. So, I just really wanted to just share those, like, actual correct facts, because we can't talk about celebrating the diversity of the council if we also don't recognize that we are not necessarily valuing the diversity of the council. So, there is no value in just telling us how great it is to have a bunch of folks of color on the council, because history tells us that folks of color are sort of expected to be workforces without proper pay. And that's not, to me, that's not the message that we should be sending to the rest of the city, that because we have diversity, that means we can, we don't, we don't, we don't need to necessarily value them where it comes to their income. And then, one last thing I do want to say, I only myself was able to remove myself mostly from poverty right before the pandemic. So, I was still very, very close, or one or two paychecks away from, you know, something went wrong, and I would lose all of my things, for example. And so, I absolutely, even though I'm out of poverty, I absolutely cannot afford to take on more because I have to be present in my full-time job. So, it is my assumption that most of us who identify as black women especially cannot afford to truly be in this job full-time, most of us, not all. But a good number of us, we have to hold on to something else in order to do this. And I firmly believe that I would, I would love to see more folks of color, especially who incomes are lower, or very low, or no income, having the ability to serve, but it is just not feasible or doable with the income that they're, we're making. So anyways, for me, I've never celebrated, I've never, you've never heard me say, oh my God, I'm so happy, there's so many people of color on the council. It's a nice thing, but where it comes to income, we're not necessarily valuing those folks. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to speak to my support of this amendment, I guess. I spoke to a lot of constituents about this prior to proposing an amendment, I wasn't originally going to. And the reason I did so was because District Eight is very special in a way where this is a time, a year before my term ends, where new students will come up to me and say, hey, I want to run for alder next year, tell me a little bit more about the role. And the reason District Eight is so special in that way is because there's not many District Eight alders who will hold this seat that often, where you are students, we will graduate and get a job, hopefully, and a whole other, a whole bunch of other things. It's a very transitional role that we hold. And so, I was very open, talked to constituents about this, and many of them asked, like, okay, do you even get paid? Like, how much work do you do? And when I'm saying that, the people who are interested are the people who can afford to be interested. And like Alder Martinez-Rutherford said earlier, like, this is not a pay increase for us, this is for the future set of alders and the future generation, really, and it's about finding the right pay. And I don't know if this is the right pay, but this definitely is in the right direction. District Eight, I don't know this statistically, but it is one of the districts in most poverty. Most students are in debt. We do not have a source of income that is great. This is my only source of income as alder. And personally speaking, like, as a student, if you are a student and an alder, you're not making the most, like, really, it is not great, you guys. But I'm not thinking about myself here. If I wanted to run for this position and I wanted money, I would have gone to work at Chipotle, which pays $18 an hour, or Walmart, which starts at 20 an hour, or McDonald's, which starts at 17 an hour. Like, this is not the job I would have gone for if I wanted money. So, I really encourage you guys to think about the people that comes after you, because it is not about us. And like Alder Tagg Evers said earlier, if you think that taking this additional money for yourself, if you run for reelection or whatever is wrong, then you can give that money back to the city. So, I encourage you to vote for the future generations of alders and city leaders in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. I've thought about this a lot, and then we referred it, so I've continued to think about this topic. And I dived in a little bit into, like, what is an average city job? And I did, you know, I look, you know, we get those emails, what's, who's, what's we're hiring? And just random, okay? I know it's totally anecdotal. There was, it ranged from $8.98 for a food and beverage server, to, the next one up was $16.64 for a golf course attendant. And then, we started getting in the $20 range, you know, a forest stew specialist, a streets laborer, you know, they make $19.66 an hour as start, they deserve a raise, for sure. And then, a painter crosswalk. So, there's a range of definitely the low scale. And do I, am I supportive and sympathetic to everyone who's like, I need this money? I was the one who got us close to where we were because, and I got to see Alder clear tonight at the CCEC meeting, and he and I did play tag team probably a decade ago, where I was like, we need to get more money. And I put $2,000 in at the finance level of the budget, and he's like, that's not enough. And he put in $2,000 in the past. We haven't had a significant raise since that time. And so, you know, we get the little incremental 2% or whatever that is that everybody gets. So, you know, there's that. Well, you tried last year, and you know, we know how that worked. So, I'm sympathetic, I needed that money. I was a books, I worked at a bookstore, and I couldn't have bought my condo if I didn't have this job plus the bookstore job. So, I know how important it is, I know if you're a student, it's your wage, and I know, I hear you. And I think you're worth it, we're all worth it, the future's worth it. But the optics are bad for me, I can't support even $20 an hour. And what I think the way forward is, is to think about what I think, what I advocate for is that people deserve a living wage. We alders deserve a living wage, right? And we're not typical employees, right? Who's our boss? It's like 20-some thousand people who, you know, are going to tell us what to do. It's not like somebody's going to say, you know, you've been working really well, and you know, you, you know, promote you. No, we just all get the same, no matter what. So, we're not quite the same as other workers. But we are workers here, and in our other jobs, or our retirement income, or however else we pay our bills. And when I looked up what the city says is a living wage, it's on the finance webpage, it says $15.87 an hour. I would support that. Yes, it's more like $17,000, and it's a bigger increase percentage-wise than most, every worker except the billionaires will get. But I think we haven't had a significant recognition of what a living wage is in our own salary, and so, that's what I would support. And not like I don't see if this passed, you know, I could do it, Alder Evers, and give up some money if I wanted to, I get that. But I don't think that's really what most people will do, even if they think it's a good idea. So, anyway, I probably won't be supporting this, but I understand there might be another amendment that would be more in the range where I think I could support and defend to my constituents, who generally think that we should get something. You know, I don't get the emails that yell at us and tell us, you know, make us feel bad. No, I get the ones like, yeah, you work it, and you probably should get a little more, but no one wants us to get 60% more, and I don't, which is the underlying motion. And I don't really think anyone here has spoken to getting that, so I don't really assume that's on the table. But what's on the table is this motion for about $20 an hour. And again, I am sympathetic to, you're worth it, but I don't think I can support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wohili?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I don't see this as a city employee rate below minimum wage. I see this as stipend. For that reason, I have been against, against any, any increase in the alder pay. However, I am not supporting the 60% increase, but I will support any compromise. And my reason is merely- Uh, and my reason is merely equity in the lens of students. Uh, we have the university here, and students will be able to sup-, you know, to participate in the political process. And for students who are taking full-time class, uh, working part-time, and if they want to be engaged in the, uh, this process, then it would be very hard. So for that reason, I am open to supporting any compromise that comes, and I'm supporting this twenty dollars per hour. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to echo a lot of what people said already. I think everyone knows where I stand at this. I think I've been a very clear advocate for some sort of raise, and I think I will be supporting this twenty-dollar-an-hour raise. Um, let's just be clear, no one is going to become rich or a career politician off of twenty-six thousand dollars a year if you're the president. Um, I think right when I first got on, I learned very quickly that in order to afford a two-bedroom apartment here in Madison, you needed to make at least twenty-two dollars an hour to be able to afford the rent. So with that being said, none of us can afford a two-bedroom apartment by ourselves, let alone if we have children, other things like that. And someone else made a very good point. Um, when my son was seventeen years old, he was working as a, as a host at a restaurant, and he's literally making sixteen dollars an hour. My son is sixteen, seventeen years old, making more money than I am, working at, for the city. It just, it's hard to, to fathom that, that my teenage child is making more money than I am. Um, secondly, what I wanted to say is that, like Alder ever said, if, if you guys don't think that this is appropriate or is it too much, then you don't have to accept the money. But I think if we want to respect one another, and respect is a big word that we say a lot, then we should uphold this and make this at least some sort of closer to a living wage as possible. So people are not, I mean, the people that we're trying to serve, they don't know that we're one paycheck away from being homeless, all of us on council. So it's never going to be a good time. Unfortunately, there's always going to be a struggle with the budget, but we have to be realistic. If we want to continue to serve in the capacity that we are serving and to better serve our constituents, we have to have our basic needs met, point blank, period. And that's what I've been searching, or that's what I've been advocating for since I came on here. Our basic needs are a necessity. We have to have a roof over our head, we have to have food, we have to have clothing. So in order for us to be able to serve other people, we have to take care of ourselves first. And, and this is not, I don't think we're asking that much um with this twenty-dollar rate. Yes, I agree, the sixty percent rate raise maybe, may have been a little high, but again, it's like, where do we find this happy medium to make everybody happy? So I would just ask that my colleagues please support this, let's get this passed, and, you know, um, like Director Schmidke, he said that this is like very, very point zero five. Can you say that again? What was it again, please? Hundreds of a percent?
It's five one-hundredths of one percent.
Right. So it, this is, I think this is just a little bit of change in the barrel for us to be able to survive and to be able to not even live comfortably. I mean, to make twenty-two dollars an hour to afford a two-bedroom apartment, you got to make at least forty-five thousand dollars a year. So twenty-five thousand dollars a year is, is half of that. So I just ask that my colleagues please support this, twenty dollars an hour, so we can continue to bring this diverse council that we have and continue to empower and encourage other folks to run. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so when we, many of you know I'm very impassioned about this subject. Um, it is something that is deeply personal to me, and I think, and just a principle that I hold, that everyone deserves a, a living wage. So with that as a overall statement, the, one thing that strikes me um with what folks are saying about our wages and the conversation that preceded this last year is the idea of public service, that a pub, that our job is a public service. And there is some conflation I felt there between identifying public service as akin to volunteering. Volunteering is an act or service that you do without an expectation of compensation. Public service is a service which is provided by the government to people within its jurisdiction. That's the literal Webster, whatever dictionary definition of that. So when you go to what service do we provide? We provide representation. It is our job to represent constituents on issues that deeply matter to them. And many of my colleagues have made it clear that alder pay is an impediment to their ability to do this job of representation. And the first alder that spoke, spoke about decisions to run on a basis of wages. And I recognized like, that's also something I didn't really take into account, I just was really upset and wanted to see change. Um, though, I also recognize that there are many people that make this decision to run, actually not make the decision to run, but make the decision not to run because they cannot do this. So for the reasoning behind what I think we should tell our constituents as to why we're voting for this is, first, the council is not offering the level of service our constituents deserve. And the second premise is, the payment of alders is a significant barrier to our constituents in receiving this level of service. Many current alders, past alders, and interested people with the pu-, high potential of performing well in this role cannot afford to be an alder. As um Alder Conklin just stated, you need twenty-two dollars an hour to order a one-bedroom apartment, it's a little under twenty dollars an hour to afford uh, or two-bedroom apartment, twenty dollars an hour to afford a one-bedroom apartment as a single person. So that's just the baseline, and we are significantly under that. When I speak to my constituents and they find out that I only receive around, like, less than fifteen thousand dollars, they are astonished. So they are astonished and flabbergasted and think that we should get more raises. So that is something to be considered. I recognize that last year, some folks might not have been here during the discussion that we had about alder pay. Um, I will say, the reason why this is so personal to me is because it is something that I can directly demonstrate has impacted my ability as an alder. And that in, um, during my term as an alder, I came back home from winter break, as I was the District Eight alder at the time and still a student, and came home to a five-day eviction notice. That five-day eviction notice, having come from not being able to afford rent with my current alder salary and lack of income as a student. And that is a reality that I will hold with me for the rest of our lives, that literally, as I advocated on the council floor for tenant protections, for affordable housing, I couldn't even afford my own housing. And as we talk about conversations about rent burden and uh, all these types of difficulties, I, I, I just think it is so imperative that we are able to put our oxygen masks on before we try to assist others. And that is just my story um with the previous term that I served. Since then, I've experienced many family troubles, other tribulations that contributed to financial difficulties. But again, that's just me. There are many other alders that I recognize have other struggles with just the career they're in, the skin they have, and um, their gender identity, um, whether they have children or whether they're just starting out their career or retired and aging in grace and cannot afford this job. So, secondly, and this is more recently, as a recent development of myself, um, some of you may know, I'm very excited to finally have a full-time job. Um, and still, I feel very, a little saddened that even those that some, those of us who can somehow finagle the money to afford this job, simply cannot give constituents the level of service they deserve. And by this, I mean, and I mean this as no slight um to the mayor, um, but we only have one elected official in Madison that is full-time dedicated to representing the constituents. Like, that is their literal full-time job, and that is the mayor. And when we have conversations about budget difficulties, about our housing crisis, about transportation issues, and then we point to the mayor and say, Mayor, why aren't you doing your job? We also haven't given ourselves the tools to empower us as a council to get to, to make decisions and represent our constituencies through the position as not as um full-time. And I know that's not the conversation that's on the table that is full-time. It is my belief, though, that an alder's inability to dedicate more time and service to this city, to the constituency, to do the job that we can do, is directly related to our pay. So, all that being said, I strongly encourage you to, if, if the hard part for you is relaying to our, your constituents why we deserve an alder pay increase, I encourage you to literally show them how much our salary is and ask them if this is the level of service that they think they deserve. And secondly, I ask you to ask them when they think is a better time to make these decisions. And if they think that at a time when we need to be making very important financial decisions, um, housing decision, transportation decisions, if the level of service that they're getting is what they want as representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitterver?
So I'd like to begin by saying, this was not my preferred solution to this issue. Um, I had brought forward a proposal to reduce the size of council and keep the budget line the same. Um, that would have brought more work to each of us, but also a bit more pay. Um, that certainly would not be a viable option if we continue to keep the boards, commissions, and committees at the size they are, because all of us, um, that I think many of our residents don't recognize, serve not only on council, but on multiple committees um that take up quite a bit of our time during the rest of the time when we're not sitting at council meetings. Um, but we are in a legislative body, and my peers did not find that a compelling path to take. Instead, um, the proposal was put forward to increase pay. And I voted for that at CCEC for two reasons, one of which is I wanted it to come to the full floor, because I thought, I do believe that this debate is worthy of all of us. And the second reason is because I have been so moved by the stories of particularly our current and former student representatives, and the challenges that they have faced in continuing their studies and doing this job. The time commitment is much, much larger than people think, as I said. And quite frankly, the abuse we take is significant, as Alter, Alder Martinez-Rutherford alluded to earlier. It's not easy to do this job. I personally sit in a position of quite a bit of privilege, and I recognize that. I'm in a dual-income household, my children do not have special needs, and we are lucky enough to have generational wealth, although only a single generation. Um, and so, to some degree, I share Alder Field's misgivings about raising our pay in a time of structural deficits. Um, but at the same time, I do believe that when we are in a position of privilege, we owe it to the people around us who have less privilege to be able to understand their perspectives and bring them relief where it can be brought. So I will support the twenty-dollar-an-hour amendment because I believe that it's the right thing to do, and it will foster a better council in future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really wasn't going to speak on this issue. Um, but I've listened to what a lot of you have said, and I just want to make a few comments. Um, someone talked about being a civil servant, and what does that mean? So I'm someone that is retired in twenty-eighteen, after thirty-six years of working in government. I started out as a prison guard. Great position, you know, to learn about yourself and other people. I think back then, we were paid eight dollars an hour when we started, but that's, all right, inflation, I guess, can change that. But the point is, I know what it means to work as a government employee, work your way up the ranks, finally get the management, get a little more pay. But it's a, you know, it's a humbling task. But I think people come into different aspects of civil service for that reason, they, they want to serve. They don't, I heard everyone here that spoke said they don't think about the money. You, oh, you didn't do it for the money. Okay, so being an alder is a choice. Everybody here sat down, made an informed choice that they wanted to serve their community, represent certain constituents, and that was your choice to make. And I really believe none of you thought about what the pay was, I don't think, maybe. But um, in any case, um, I think it's just, I mean, even in all those years that I worked for government, I've always was serving on some committee or commission, multiple ones, I still do, and I don't get paid for it. It's something that I want to do to contribute to my community, and that's why I do it. So I understand, we all got to pay bills, we all have bills to pay and, and, and things to do, but I think that's why we all kind of work and have a profession or a job or whatever it takes to um sustain ourselves. I was looking at my emails, out of all the emails that I got from people about this item, only one person supported a pay raise, one. And even though I think some of the people, maybe they don't understand how, what the things that we do, I tell people, we do everything, including a barking dog, because we do get those barking dog calls. Uh, but the point is, that's why they use the term civil servant. Now, that doesn't mean you need to be a slave and work for free, but, and I do believe you need, we, we all deserve to be compensated, but the people have spoken. We represent those citizens out there, not ourselves, to line our pockets, to help make our ends meet. How many people get to vote on their own pay increase? Not many. Not many people get that opportunity. Maybe if you're in a union, you Not many people get that opportunity. Maybe if you're in a union, you can vote and negotiate, but that's not many people. It's not a good look. It is not a good look. So I'm not going to vote for this. I'm not going to vote for any pay raise. And if I need money, then I have to do what I do, is I have a part-time job in addition to getting my pension and my social security. Okay? So I'm not going to support this. I think it's a bad look. But most importantly, I'm not saying that you don't deserve it, but listen to what your constituents are telling you. How many people did told you yes? I looked at all of my emails, one. One person. So I gotta I gotta I gotta represent those constituents, not myself, on this one.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindaraj, and I believe this is at least the second time.
Yes, second time and final time. Thank you. I, part of this goes back to how much our constituents actually engage, and not how much, but in a way, who? The constituents who have access to our emails, who know how to email us. They are the ones, in a way, more likely than not, to have that privilege of information. And the ones who do not email us, the ones who do not see us, who do not talk to us, or or do not even know what an alder is, they more likely than not are the ones who are working so much that they do not have the time to email or fight against any anything that we take up on this council. So I do want to say stress that, that yes, a lot of our emails were against this, but we, I spoke to a lot of my constituents, not just the people interested in running, but just, hey, I'm like, I am doing something that I am uncomfortable with. I am raising my roles pay. I want to be clear, we are not raising our own pay. We cannot raise our own pay. We are raising the pay for the future alders. But I spoke to them, because this is a very uncomfortable decision to make, and they said, all of them, not a single person disagreed, and they said, yeah, if you're working really hard, you deserve to get paid how much you're working. Fair work, fair pay, or whatever the phrase is. I can't really remember. People deserve to be paid a living wage, but this compromise is not a living wage. The City of Madison does say that a living wage is $15.87, but that also says you're working 40 hours a week, and that's accounted in that calculate calculation. Our alder pays are calculated at 20 hour, 20.81 hours a week. So if we want to do the living wage calculator, then we should be getting paid $31.74 an hour if we want a real living wage and still maintain the part-time job position description. And that's not what this is. This is much lower than that. This this truly is a compromise. This is not living wage. And that's because being an alder, you're not really meant, this is not meant to be a livable job. This is a public service, and you are serving other people. You're not here to line your own pockets, and none of us are. Okay, like, we are not based off this one job. The I think someone else said it earlier before, this is an alder stipend, but I really want to stress that I do think that this is a fair compromise. I think that it is 0.0005% of an increase to the entire capital budget. I prefer full decimals instead of one, yeah, whatever that was. But this is a very minimal increase to property taxes, which renters also pay to the 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 budget and everything else. I just really want to stress that this is not for us. This is for the future alders, your future representatives. And this is never going to be a livable wage. And I really encourage everyone to think about the future and vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Meante.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So back when I voted no for this, I had my reasons. I just wanted to, as complex as this is, share those reasons. While some argue that increasing alder wages would encourage more people of color to apply and run for this position, I hold a different perspective. Commercializing this role might inadvertently create barriers for individuals from diverse backgrounds to access public service roles. It's crucial to recognize that these positions are about public service and civic engagement, not financial gain. Elevating wages could unintentionally shift the focus of public service at those to financial incentives, potentially deterring those driven by genuine passion for serving their communities. Additionally, it's essential to heed that recent referendum where constituents expressed disapproval for tax wage increases. Balancing these with our anticipated deficit in 2025, it's prudent it's prudent to reevaluate these proposals in the context of financial responsibility and aligning it with community sec uh settlements. Let's remain mindful that fostering diversity and inclusion in our representing isn't solely contingent upon financial compensation. It's about creating equitable opportunities and supporting our environment where individuals from all backgrounds feel empowered and capable of contributing to betterment of our city. I said at all to say this, too. I'm a steel worker, and I've been a union worker for years, 26 years. And we have COLA, which is cost of living. And I think that cost of living is calculated by uh social security, which is if it's, I think it's 8.7. If you take, say, you make $10,000, take 10,000 times 8.7, get about $10,887. So that's how COLA is even calculated. To go from 13,000 to whatever is is it, I I I can't represent it. I can't uh I can't vote for something like that. So, I mean, I understand what the students. I mean, there was a great Austin Keen that came before, elected in 2003. His genuine passion for the students and what he did and accomplished was great without asking for a wage. I mean, Mike Revere, I call him the Godfather. He's been here for years. And he doesn't, he he hasn't asked for almost anything, you know, and I I just love his passion and his knowledge and wisdom for what he does, so I I won't be supporting in any ways increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers for the second time.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank all my colleagues for the different opinions. And some who have changed their opinion and and are apparently going to vote differently than they have in the past. And I I think there are folks who are sort of on the, you know, to go either way with this, but if I might, Mayor, just make correct a few things that I heard and underline once more, we are not voting on our own wage increase, quite clearly. It's not true that we are voting uh to increase our own salaries. This would not go in effect until 2025. Secondly, we are not commercializing anything. To draw comparison to service on a committee or a commission or or board of directors, there are a few of those positions that require an estimated 20 to 21 hours a week, which is what's estimated here, but often it takes more. So I think that is a less than appropriate analogy. And I do want to make a couple other corrections. The lowest-paid hourly employee is a food and beverage server. But they the $8 an hour figure that Alder Ramon mentioned isn't quite accurate, because they actually make $15 an hour, if not enough is made in tips, and more can be made than 15 an hour for the for that food and beverage server. And they tend to be seasonal workers. They can get, they're eligible for $1.50 an hour, $2.50 an hour seasonal bonus. So their actual employee pay may be higher than what's listed here. In terms of permanent employees, the lowest-paid permanent employee currently with the city is a transit cus customer service rep, which makes 1940 an hour. And this is from Christine Coe in the Finance Department. I also just looking at the living wage calculator and understand how the living wage is determined through by the City of Madison. I in in 1999, the wage was 791 an hour, and it was at that in in January 1, 2000, year 2000, that wage was equal to 105% of the federal poverty level for a family of four, divided by 2080. It's changed, uh and now it's the wage is equal to 110% of the poverty level. So when we're talking about a living wage, it's to be our benchmark, it's against a determination of what the poverty level is in our community. Bring us back to this question of is the laborer worthy of their hire? Is the laborer worthy of a wage that fairly compensates them for the work that they do? So a living wage calculation, which is based on a, you know, the rate of poverty for a family of four, and again, that's a full-time wage versus uh a part-time wage. Our current part-time wage is around $14 an hour. We calculated on the basis of roughly 21 hours a week. There's really not enough to make ends meet for students and for lower-income individuals in our community. But I'll leave it with that. I'm being redundant here. I'm repeating myself. Just ask yourself, is the laborer worthy of their hire? Are people who are elected officials worthy of being fairly paid in their community? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um there are a lot that's been said that I don't want to be labored by being repetitive, but some comments that I wanted to weave made previously. So I think it's been hammered over the head that none of us got into this position to get wealthy on the backs of taxpayers, that a majority of this body are also taxpayers and citizens of this city. But just kind of wanted to bring attention to the narrative around respect civility, but also the time capacity and commitment that it takes to be an alder. And also coming from the perspective of being in a position that I hire staff in my in my job. And a big piece right now of workforce issues is retention and recruitment of staff. And so as I think over my tenure of being an alder and only having been two and a half years, knowing that I won't be in this role forever, and part of a role, I think of folks that are passionate about the work that we do is when we decide that it is our time to come to an end, that many of us, if not all of us, will put in the work to try to find someone who's not only interested but would be a suitable replacement, should we not run or be elected. And I have really reckoned over the last, I'll be honest, two years with whether or not if someone was to approach me saying they were interested in the position, how I would incentivize or even try to retain their retention in that. And pay is not equivalent, just getting an equal, a a higher rate of pay will not automatically result in a greater quality of work or agreement on controversial issues. But it will show respect and trust in our constituency and democracy and who we choose to elect to represent us, but also thanking whoever is in that role for what is a pretty thankless job. So to give some kind of very concrete examples, we are going on about four and a half hours for those of us who are part of Common Council Executive Committee and then have met as common counsel. And tonight we had an interim appointment, and we have Alder Uguir now in District 19. So many of our colleagues who weren't even on the CCEC committee were among us. Plan Commission happened yesterday. Unfortunately, the first meeting of the year was not able to happen, and so that meeting went six hours. We have alders right now who, just attending their basic committee appointments, have spent about 10 and a half hours of work out of their 20.81 hours a week that were paid for. That does not equal in responding to emails, which we've had a lot regarding the weather, snow plowing, doesn't equate to phone calls. It doesn't equate to filling out our campaign finance statements or other clerical administrative things that maybe our council office, our chief of staff are asking of us. It doesn't include the amount of time that alders may take to dedicate to communicating with their constituents about the work they're doing, their viewpoint on those matters, and blogs that are personalized. It's easy to co copy and paste, and thank God we have capacity in our council office to compile everything that's going on in our in our city, in our government. It's like, um, thank God we have Larissa to do that, and we could copy and paste. But I know many of us want that personalization of I am your alder, I am your neighbor, but I'm your representative, and here's what I think about what we're voting on, and here's what I'm working on to represent you and your interests. I don't mean to make this personal, but it does become personal, because as Alder Martinez Rutherford said, there are people behind the screens. This week, or the past week in particular, with snow plowing and our street conditions, um I've seen many op-eds, I've seen social media threads. Um and one that I want to point out that was captured in a, I believe, ISMS or CAP Times editorial actually captured the express, a day in the life of a snowplow driver, as recalled over Nextdoor, talking about missing holidays, talking about not getting overtime, but their commitment to making sure that our city continues to move, that public functions are bust, that if you have a car, you're able to get into it and get to where you need to go. I'm not sure if I'm the only one, and I'm pretty sure I'm not, but I've received emails comparing, well, Alder, you haven't blogged in so many months. This Alder blogged. I'm not getting the same information. Uh we have social media. Many of us are requested on to attend neighborhood events and meetings to be on panels and speak and talk about our leadership and be looked to as a leader in this capacity, but I'll be honest. I can't say that I feel very respected and thanked for the job and the work that I put in. And I'll be honest that a retreat we had this last weekend that was about policy and how our values inform our policy decisions and creation, one of our opening exercises was eye-opening for me. And I want to read it verbatim, because not everybody in the body was in attendance nor members of the public. But the opening exercise was asking us two questions. How has being an alder impacted your life? Whether that's positive, negative, and transformational impacts? When we think about our physical well-being, when we think about our mental well-being, when we think about our personal relationships with family and close friends, when we think about our public relationships with neighbors, other alders, city staff, et cetera. And here's the one that really stuck out to me. How has being an alder impacted your identity, worldview, or other aspects? The things that I ran on have not been the things I've been able to focus on in this job. There are constantly things thrown at you. There are constantly things thrown at us that we have no fathom or understanding of, and that it takes additional capacity, probably another 20.81 hours, to understand the complexity of stormwater utility. Basic vital functions. And I will be very transparent and say that my response, we had to put sticky notes under these columns of how has being an alder impacted my life? And I said that I feel like I'm a performative puppet and a sellout because I have not focused on the folks whose voices aren't here, on the folks who don't know what an alder is, that we exist and that we can serve to represent them. This doesn't mean to, I'm not trying to throw shots at those of you who are engaged and locked in and send your thoughts and feedback. We often don't disagree, we often don't agree. But I often think about if someone who doesn't know what an alder is learns what that role is, how much time it takes to do that role, and understands that we get paid below the federal poverty level for that job, I think any rational human being would say, get a different job. or get paid as an incentive to continue the passion and the work on behalf of the city. And so I'll wrap it up by giving another concrete example of many phone calls and emails that I've, that I get sometimes go unresponded. Or I cannot accommodate, especially snow. I got a lot of calls and texts and emails asking me to come out and see what my constituents were experiencing. And as much as it pains me, I'm not able to do that because I also juggle another job that is emotionally draining. And so I want everyone to think about, again, Alder Martinez-Rutherford brought kindness and being kind to each other. Another reflective piece is when we become alders, a lot of our constituents or city staff reach out and invite us to do ride alongs to see what it is that they do and walk along a day in their life. I would encourage folks who believe and treat us as public servants and sometimes public servants in servitude to walk alongside or ask your alder, how was your day? How was your week? What's going on that may make your nonverbal not friendly when you're on camera? We are also humans and that impacts how we show up, how much dedication we want to put into this job to represent, passion aside. And thinking about physical, mental, personal relationships? The retention of having people who are passionate about serving the city when the message has been, we don't respect you enough to pay you a living wage. So I'm sorry, I rambled there, but I think, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Thanks, Mayor. So if I look at my calendar for just last week, you know, I've been tracking my hours. I actually was tracking them all year, but I didn't get to, to do last year, the 2023 because of the situation with losing my stuff. But, you know, I looked at Monday, 8:30 AM to 11:30 PM. Tuesday, 1:30 to 7:30. Wednesday, 2 to 11:30 PM. Thursday, 2 to 8. Friday, 2 to 6 PM. And I'll leave Saturday at 12 to 4. It might be 12 to 3:30. That said, I think that this whole thing is a fool's errand. It is a red herring. And I agree with you, I agree with you that this is not a part time job. And it's not a volunteer job that I would even take because with what we are put through. Meaning we are responsible for the budget, we're responsible for the building, we're responsible for our constituents, we're responsible for knowing the zoning code and all this other stuff at 28 different subjects. And we are a ballerina syndrome, what I call the ballerina syndrome. So I want you to be a ballerina, so I'm going to sign you up for a class. And then I'm going to take you to a show, the Nutcracker. And then when you get in it, I'm not going to support you. I'm not going to train you, I'm not driving you to the lessons, I'm not putting my, all my heart and soul into it. Now you guys are not going to like the direction I'm going to go, but I'm going to go there. So I hear what our constituents say. It's a volunteer job, not, we don't deserve a 60% increase, not. We are, we should be about the budgetary concern, concerns, and it looks bad to our constituents. So let me start with the budget. The deficit is not our problem. It's really not. When we got during the budget season, when we went in under MGO 4.7, I will not go back there. But we, if we passed, what I wanted to have passed to balance the budget, to find the money to do the things that we needed to do. My colleagues said, I do not want to be here past midnight. And they have a right to do that because this job sucks it down. So if we want to know how to balance the budget, we want to get with finance, we want to really learn and not be performative. If we really want to learn the code and, and support staff, who my goodness, if staff wasn't in the city, the city would be gone. They do so much work and they're out there by themselves when they're doing the work, right? They're, one or two people are making decision, decisions. And then we're all tempted to manipulate the situation and get them to recommend one thing or the other. So I won't even talk about Landmarks Commission and the 40 hours that I put in just to understand the issue so that I could talk about it with a level of intelligence and I could say, I don't know where it's going wrong, but I think it's over here. So why, why does the public not think that we're worth 20 bucks an hour? Or anything? Why do they feel this way? It's because they don't know the truth of our job. They don't know that we lack training. I know Karen has been trying and she's been doing excellent jobs. She's put out videos, she's, you know, pushed us. She is under resourced. She is under resourced and she's doing the best with what she's got. She has a piece of bread and she's trying to have us all eat off of it. The expectations versus reality of what we're actually put through are not in alignment. We can't even check the mayor. We even can't check the executive office because we don't have enough knowledge. Now I narrowed down on my job so I could refocus and see what it was going to take to get that knowledge. And I study all the time. And one day, maybe in two years, I will be able to check the mayor. I will be able to say to staff, hey, have you thought about this? And it won't be because Alder Romo or Alder Vermeer took more of their time to sit with us, to teach us something, to let us know what the history is when they combine their years of experience, which is 48 years. We cannot offer the level that the constituent, level of services the constituent wants, deserves, respect. Return your emails, do your blogs, because we are saddled with a professional job on a $13,000 a year salary. That is chewed up half of the time by us going through some basic obligation. We go out and meet with people and have lunch and it's 45 bucks. It just, it's gone forever, buddy. So I said, I'm not going to go on tonight. I'm just going to do one more page. I agree with the registered speaker. I agree with my colleagues. It is not the right amount on a comparative scale. Half of this council, that side of the room, 10 of us combined, combined, 10 of us combined make what one person in the executive office makes, no harm there, Mayor, that we have the same level of responsibility. The other 10 of us over here make up all of our salaries for the other, the second person in the office. It's ridiculous that we are even having this discussion. What my concern is and why I don't support either amendment, either, either issue, is we are going to absolutely destroy the, the future. Because if we get the 20 bucks or we get the first one or whatever it is, and then in two to three years, when we get more people on and we want to get a raise, the public will go ballistic. They will say, you got, took 60% raise and then they're going to go 60% of the expectation. And I'm not doing it. I'm not giving you anything else because I gave you everything I got. So this is beyond DEI, it's beyond Black women, it's beyond closing the gap. It is disparitous. This is the most inequitable position, unequal job I've ever had in my life. And I have worked an unbelievable amount of job with depth, depth. You, you guys do not actually want to hear the number I would come up with. And I'm not going to say it because it's suicidal for reelection, but it is the truth. I wouldn't want to put anybody else through this. If we wanted to close the gap, then put it in the budget. Why don't you put it in the budget? And we can work on finding the $6 million deficit that we need. And I know the 4.17, I couldn't even articulate it that night because I spent 40 hours on it. You're, I don't want to be locked into 20 bucks and get more, more emails. I think we should file this and make the case that this needs, we need to have a professional wage so that we can actually get trained and we can actually help the city make the correct decision. That's all I'm going to say tonight, I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
I believe Alder Harrington McKinney was before me.
Sorry, Alder, I thought you came in and out a couple of times. I wasn't sure if that was a Zoom issue.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, no.
Go ahead, I will speak after you.
You go ahead, please.
Hey, Alder Bennett, I'll put you back in the queue. Alder Harrington McKinney, forgive me, Alder Miyazze is actually next. Alder Miyazze? For the second time. No? All right, thank you, Alder. So then Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to personally apologize for having to leave the council early. We have a member that's on hospice and so I had to minister there. I, like Alder Knox, had chosen not to speak on this issue. But I will not be supporting any salary increase. I think even $20 is insulting for the amount of work and commitment that we do as alders. But 2025 will be financially challenging to the city of Madison. I was at a board of directors meeting this morning and after the financial report was given, it was determined that the campaign did not reach its goal. There was a significant deficit. But the staff stepped in and volunteered to free salary. And one even suggested a salary decrease. If we truly want to make the pay comparable to the work that we put in, reduce the number of alders. Reduce the, the number of alders, thus providing the, the bucket of, of, of income that will bring pay parity that so many of, of the council staff has been talking about tonight. Reduce the number of alders. Reduce the number of boards, commissions and committees that we serve on. That is what should be the issue that we should be looking at. The position absolutely deserves a full salary. And how do you get there is reducing the number of, of alders. It has been mentioned that there's a lack of kindness. There has been emails, derogatory emails. All of that has been mentioned and that's been occurring outside of the chamber. But what really pains me is the disrespect that has happened inside of the chamber. I'm so very thankful for what Karen put together on Saturday. Because at that meeting on Saturday, for the very first time, alders that I've not even communicated, we have not had any communication, spoke, worked together, and that's what community is all about. And so I will not, cannot support even $20 because that is an insult for the work that we put in. And I get it, I heard every, every conversation and every reason. $20 does not absolutely put us at a level that we should be at. But I will not be supporting any amount and I'm sorry, but I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Alder. You all are changing your minds and I'm trying to manage the queue, so forgive me. I think Alder Bennett is next.
Yeah, maybe. I just have a question for you actually, Mayor, or maybe staff. I know that Dave, David, or I should say Director Schmiedeke kind of provided us the financial numbers of this impact. Though I will say, maybe it's part of me for things, not being able to follow things as they were moving a bit fast. I would like to understand better how this, this or any pay increase would impact the 2025 budget. And I specifically asked that to you, Mayor, and then to staff because this is something that I think some of us elders have not been fully briefed on. And I know that your office is, as a full time office, has been fully briefed on it. So could you please explain that to us?
Alder, I believe the information you're looking for is in the fiscal note?
Right, well, I'm asking you, Mayor, if there's anything that you see as like, from your mayor, from your merril perspective of things that we may not have been briefed on about how this and or any other increase, like a $20 raise increase, many other alders have referenced a potential other amendment that may be coming. So it seems to me like any drop in the bucket is a nonstarter. So I want to understand from your perspective how, how, how you would perceive a wage increase to impact the 2025 budget.
I mean, I, I think the, the sort of factual way to answer the question is what's represented in the, the fiscal note, right? There's a, depending on which version you're looking at, there is a sort of total dollar number impact or there's the percent of the entire budget impact. Both of those are available to you, I think, for all the relevant numbers. I, I think though you're asking a sort of a more philosophical question, which I'm, I'm not really sure is, is mine to answer, but nonetheless, I think the short version is any additional expense to the city increases the gap between what's available to us in revenue and our cost to continue. And so you can look at that as, you know, any, any additional expense makes the problem worse. Or you can look at that as, you know, in the bigger picture, this is a relatively small increase compared to, you know, for example, the well deserved wage increases that our city staff are getting this year or whatever we might find out in terms of increases, in terms of our health insurance rates or fuel prices. I mean, all of those things are likely to be much larger total price tags than this item. But at the end of the day, you know, historically, when we bring the budget to the floor, you and your colleagues are making decisions, to use polite language, over items that are, you know, $5,000, which is a very small portion of the total cost of what you're talking about right now. So it, it's all relative, Alder, and I, I don't think that there's a way to sort of encapsulize what the impact on the budget would be other than, than literally looking at the numbers. Beyond that, it's, it's more of what kind of philosophical approach you want to take to the budget.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor. I just, I think it's interesting to hear your perspective as someone that's, oh, in charge of the budgets in extent, and then also knowing you've had plenty of time to be briefed on this and all of that. And knowing that us as a part time council hasn't had that privilege yet. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, Alder, and you will, you will all be briefed at the next meeting on the budget. You're welcome Alder, and you will all be briefed at the next meeting on the budget situation.
Right. I just want to just drop in a couple more comments, and I don't mean to take up too much time, though, first of all, I just, I don't know, I want to, I don't know, I'm coming here very authentically, so apologies if I'm not as put together as some other things that I might say. Though, last year, when this was discussed, an Alder said, basically, if you cannot afford to be an Alder, then you shouldn't run. And that is something that I feel was insinuated tonight, and I'm not meaning to point any specific fingers. To me, I feel like it comes off as if you are poor, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be in this space, which is frankly, very insulting to your colleagues. And is a major equity issue. And so that is point A. Point B, please don't tarnish my boy Austin King's name. Austin King and every single other District Eight Alder I've spoken to at length about Alder pay has made it very clear that they strongly support Alder pay increases. And not just from a student Alder perspective, there have been District Eight Alders that have graduated and have gone on their ways while serving and were still very supportive of wage increases. They've often, Austin quote said, paying rent as an Alder sucks. Or it sucks paying rent as an Alder. So let's make that clear. And as to what the Mayor just said, I know it feels like we are under a budget crisis right now, and we are. Let's not kid ourselves, we are. I'd also say, back last year, this would have been a great time to do it, when we had all that ARPA money, and do an Alder pay increase like Milwaukee did. So, though I will also say, please make it clear to me when the right time to do an Alder pay increase is. Because this is now the second time where I'm hearing that it's not the right time to make an Alder pay increase, and yet, the time to do so has not been made clear. And should we make the time clear, maybe it would be a lot easier for us to plan for it. But coming here, term after term after term after term, and spending hours of our time on the council floor, doing the job of public service, talking about the same subject, and then coming to the conclusion that now is not the right time, seems very inefficient and ineffective to me. So please make that clear to us. And I just want to really commend Alder Vitter for what she said. I think it's difficult to sometimes recognize your privilege, especially in the face of It is so much easier to put aside the things that have been said on this council about being able to afford being an Alder, especially when you could be seeking reelection. And that, those politics, that even, I believe Alder Burrus said, about really saying what we feel about Alder pay increases and thinking about our constituencies and elections is quite sad. And so, to any point, I believe that it is our duty, our civic duty, to educate our constituents about this as an issue. Again, asking those, informing them about our current pay rate, pay, and sharing with them this conversation and the very raw stories that Alders have shared about their personal struggles. And again, asking if this is, if this is the level of service that they want, or if they want to continue having a council that where some of their Alders may be poor. And if not, if you don't want to use poor, may not have the financial means to afford doing this job. And we want to continue to have a diverse, and equitable, and inclusive council, and raise the values of the city, then this is something that is a very clear yes vote to me.
Thank you Alder. Alder Wihili?
Alder, question?
We have one other Alder in the queue.
Say it again?
We have one other Alder in the queue, we have no other Alders in the queue. Alright. Alder Miyazze?
I was actually going to call point of order, but I did want my fellow Alder to actually say what she had to say. But in regards to Austin King, I have the most respect for. I met him in DC and at the National League of Cities, and he championed minimum wage and won, so I'm actually...
Did not win.
Well, he actually, he actually went ahead and wanted a wage increase and actually, you know, brought forth a lot of good things. But nevertheless, I'm just saying I have respect for him. At the time, none of these Alders asked for a livable wage. I'm just trying to say that, in no way, in form, I was trying to disrespect any former Alder. Thank you.
Thank you Alder.
I give you permission...
Pushing the edges of Alder Wihili's motion now.
I give you permission to cut me off at two minutes.
Noted.
Point of order, point of order. How many times, Madam Mayor, how many times has this Alder spoke on this issue?
This is the third time, Alder.
Okay, then it's only two times on any issue.
The Alder withdraws.
Thank you.
What's before us is the Gavindarajan substitute, I'm sorry Alder, was it a substitute or amendment?
It's an amendment.
So the Gavindarajan amendment to reduce the proposed increase to be approximately $20 per hour, it's been properly moved and seconded. That's what we're voting on, is everyone clear that we're voting on the amendment, right? So we're voting to change what's before us to approximately an increase of $20 per hour. After that, we will still have to vote on whether or not to adopt the motion. Okay? The amendment itself is a simple majority. So the amendment is only a simple majority, it only requires 11 votes to pass. The underlying motion to actually increase wages requires 15 votes. Alder Wihili, a question?
So we vote on the amendment, we need 11 votes for the $200 an hour. If that passes 11 votes, then we come back to the main amendment.
To the main motion.
The main motion of...
For 15 votes.
Which requires 15 votes.
For the actual amount of proposed, or?
As amended.
So the motion right now, you have an item before you, right? Which requires 15 votes to pass.
Okay.
The motion before you is to slightly change that item.
Okay.
The vote to slightly change that item only requires 11 votes.
Okay.
Alright, so everybody clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so 11 votes required, the motion is to change the numbers such that the pay increase would be roughly to $20 an hour. Alder Knox?
No.
No?
It's an accident.
Okay, thank you Alder. Anticipating disagreement, we'll have a roll call vote. Alders in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you, on the amendment, pardon me, Alder Vitter. Alder Vitter, aye. Aldo Wihili?
Aye.
Aldo Wihili, aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Aldo Curry?
Aye.
Aldo Curry, aye.
Aye.
Aldo Duncan, aye.
Aye.
Aldo Evers, aye.
Aye.
Aldo Field, aye.
Aye.
Aldo Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aldo Figaro Cole, aye. Aldo Gavindarajan?
Aye.
Aldo Gavindarajan, aye. Aldo Harrington McKinney?
No.
Aldo Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Knox? Alder Knox, no. Aldo Latimer Verz?
Stane.
Aldo Latimer Verz, with stains. Aldo Madison?
Aye.
Aldo Madison, aye. Aldo Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aldo Martinez Rutherford, aye. Aldo Miyazze? Aldo Miyazze, no. Aldo Rommel?
No.
Aldo Rommel, no. Aldo Weger?
Aye.
Weger, aye. Aldo Tischler?
No.
Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Revere?
Aye.
Aldo Revere, aye. We have 14 ayes, five noes, one abstention.
14 ayes, the amendment passes. So what's before us now is the motion as amended. Everybody clear on what's before us now? Are there further questions or discussion? Alder Bennett?
So this is a 14 or 15 vote item?
This is a 15 vote item.
I see, so a 15 vote item to pass a wage increase.
That's correct. There are further discussion? Aldo Conklin?
Yeah, I just want a clarification that now we're voting to actually go through with the raises. We have the amount set, so this is to qualify for...
Yes.
The raises at $20.
Unless somebody makes a different motion, what's before us right now is to approve an Alder pay increase at a rate of approximately, to a rate of approximately $20 an hour, details of which are in your email from Aldo Gavindarajan. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Alder. Aldo Duncan?
I'd like to make a motion amendment to that. I just sent it out to everyone to have it be at $17.80 an hour, instead of the $20 an hour. The reason for this, and looking at the budgetary concern that so many people are worried about from the emails we've received, for 2025, the budgetary concerns that would impact the 2025 budget would be $67,000, which probably is 9 1/100ths of 1%, which, as we look at the budget and we see other agencies and the percentage of the budget that those agencies have, I think that to have a livable wage for our Alders and for those individuals representing the people of Madison, I think $17.80, when you look at the living wage for the City of Madison, depending on which calculation you look at, it's around $17.50 is what some places are seeing, and that is why I will be pushing this amendment forward.
Alright, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
That's moved and seconded. So same situation now, what's before us is a motion to further amend the underlying proposal to reduce the pay increase to $17.80 an hour. On that amendment, Aldo Gavindarajan?
Motion for a 10-minute recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to take a 10-minute recess, is there objection to recording? Unanimous vote in favor of taking a 10-minute recess. Alder Bennett, are you objecting?
No, I'm not objecting.
So we will take a 10-minute recess, it is 9:29, we'll come back at 9:39. We'll come back at nine thirty-nine. Seeing no discussion. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the Duncan amendment?
Leads me as a no, McKinnney.
We'll do a roll call. There's enough requests. So all those in favor of the Duncan amendment, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Vidra. Alder Vidra, aye. Alder Wehelia.
Aye.
Wehelia, aye. Alder Bennett.
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin.
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry.
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan.
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers.
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Field.
Aye.
Alder Field, aye. Alder Figaro Cole.
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Govindarajan.
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan, aye. Alder Uggere.
Aye.
Uggere, aye. Working on it, sorry. Alder Henry McKinnney is a no?
Alder Henry McKinnney, you wish to be recorded as voting no?
That is correct, Madam.
Thank you very much. Alder Henry McKinnney, no. Alder Knox. Alder Knox, no. Alder Latimer Burris. Alder Latimer Burris abstained. Alder Madison.
Aye.
Alder Madison, aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Aye.
Alder Martinez Rutherford, aye. Alder Miyazze. Alder Miyazze, no. Alder Rommel.
Aye.
Alder Rommel, aye. Show, uh, sorry, Alder Tischler. Alder Tischler, no. Alder Revere.
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. So fourteen ayes, four noes, one abstain.
Fifteen ayes?
Uh, no. I've got four noes and one abstain.
I think it's fifteen ayes. There's twenty of them.
My apologies, fifteen ayes is correct.
Fifteen, yes.
Local science.
Yes, so the final code is fifteen ayes, four noes, and one abstention. The amendment passes. What's before us is the main motion as amended by Alder Duncan, Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been supporting amendments to bring down the overall number. I still think they're too high. Apologies to my colleagues for keeping us here later. I did just share an amendment that sets this to fifteen eighty-seven an hour. This is a motion, an amount where I would support the main motion. This is, corresponds to the city's current living wage listed on the page that I shared with alders, in case you're curious to read about where that comes from.
Okay, so I'm sorry, can you say that number again, Alder?
Yes, fifteen eighty-seven an hour. It corresponds to seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-three a year. Budget impact thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five. And I did share that with licensing, the licensing email address.
Thank you, Alder. Is there a second? Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the Field Amendment. Is there discussion? Alder Latimer Burris.
Yeah, I wanted to, and I don't know if this is before, the proper time, but before we vote, I think we should table this issue. I don't want to kill, I don't want to kill it. And I think we're doing a disservice to the future. So I don't know when I make the motion, but I want to do that. I don't know if it's proper now, or...
Almost any motion is proper now, but if you could just hold that thought for one minute. Alder Field, your amendment doesn't address the levels for leadership. So I didn't know if you wanted to change those from what Alder Duncan proposed or not, but you might want to clarify that. All right, so go ahead and we'll address Alder Latimer Burris's request. Alder Latimer Burris, if I discern your intention correctly, you don't want to place this on file. That is, you don't want to vote it down, but you want to continue this conversation at a future date? Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know what motion it takes, but I think that, you know, it's a serious issue. And if we, you know, dink around with, you know, fifteen dollars and eleven dollars and seven and then, you know, sixteen and everything, it's a disservice to the future council and to the issue. I would beg the colleague that would say that we do not work our tail ends off. And so I don't know what we could do. I don't know what motion Attorney Haas we could put forth, not just to come back and discuss it, but like maybe defer it, get together our council on the whole, and really get down into the nitty gritty on this.
So Alder, I think there's a number of options before you. You could, and I'll ask the attorney to stop me if I go astray, but you could place it on file without prejudice, which would allow any alder to bring back a similar or identical proposal almost immediately if they wanted to. You could refer it to an appropriate committee, which probably the most appropriate committee would be C C E C.
Could we refer it to a committee on the whole?
You could refer it to a committee on the whole, which would have to be scheduled, but I think that's in order. So a motion to refer somewhere would be in order. You could refer it back to a future council meeting if you wanted to, which is sort of a similar impact. I think those are your options. Am I missing anything?
I think those are the options, but there is a question of what takes priority, right? So we have an amendment to the main motion. If you wanted to place it on file, we first deal with the amendment. If you wanted to refer it to either a future council meeting or to a committee, that would take precedence before we get to the amendment.
Well, I would like to refer it to committee of the whole so that we can really have a serious discussion. We all might come out exactly the same or more, but I just, if we're going to be building the city and doing this for real and responsible for the results, then I think we should take ourselves seriously. Because my fear is we get locked into fifteen bucks an hour, and then in five years the council says, oh, gosh, this is terrible, I can't do this work. And the public will say, well, you guys gave yourself a forty percent raise. They don't understand, and I've said this already so brief, they don't understand the depths of what we do if we were to do it. Now, none of us can do it because it just, it's ridiculous. It's all of a sudden you get angry because you're like, I have to read this thing tonight, and I've already given the city all my free hours. I give them free hours all the time. Because you guys go home and think about it. You walk down the sidewalk and think about the city. Come on, people. Let's not do this. So I would like to do a motion to refer to a committee on the whole.
The motion to refer on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer to a future committee of the whole. There is a cue to discuss, Alder Field.
Would now, Mayor, be the appropriate time to talk about the officer wages? I have those.
No, but you might want to forward them to the group so that we have that in front of us if, once we decide what we're doing with this referral. Alder Bennett. On the question of referral? No? Alder Govindarajan on the question of referral?
Yes, Attorney Haas, can you explain the difference between a committee of the whole and whatever this is? Are there different rules? Are there, yeah?
Essentially, the entire council is a committee of the whole. The difference is the committee of the whole would be making a recommendation to the council or could make a recommendation to the council, just like any other committee. The final vote would still rest with, at a council meeting.
Are there different, like, can we ask other alders questions? Is there like, are, okay? Okay.
The substantive difference between a regular council meeting and a committee of the whole is that I don't have to chair a committee of the whole, and you all can discuss and address each other rather than needing to address the chair.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Wehelia, is it a question?
Will that be public?
It's a public meeting, yes.
Okay.
Alder Bennett?
I just want to clarify. I, I, I recognize where my colleague is coming from, that this is something that needs further discussion. Or I wouldn't say necessary further discussion, but this is something the entire body should be fully entrenched in. And recognizing that because our colleagues before us have chosen that we don't deserve a livable wage, I'm sorry that you weren't able, that everyone wasn't able to prepare for this meeting. And that's just a fact. Though I want to clarify, regardless of what we vote on tonight, are we still able to continue this conversation? For example, are we able to, after this, just continue to dispense with whatever is, what is in front of us today, but then continue to have a meeting of the whole on the subject of alder pay? Is that, is that a possibility? Or does our decision tonight, is it final for this term?
So if, if the item is referred, there is no decision made. So it would go to a future committee of the whole, which would need to be scheduled. And then after the discussion at the committee of the whole, the council would need to vote on it. So we wouldn't, the motion to refer passing would end the discussion tonight. Send the item to a committee of the whole.
I, I understand that. What I'm trying to make clear is, should we dispense with this item? Should we vote on it? Do that? Are we able to then bring it? Are we, are we able still then to speak about alder pay as a general thought and get all of our feedback as a meeting of the whole? Because it sounds like the intent is to have a conversation with the, with the, with the entire council about alder pay, though that is a conversation that can be had without placing a hold on this debate, is my understanding.
So if, if the underlying item passes, then yes, you can revisit... So, if the underlying item passes, then yes, you can revisit both a specific proposal around alder pay levels, or a general discussion around alder pay levels. If the item is placed on file, you would need to wait ninety days? Sixty days before another specific proposal was brought forward, but you could have a general discussion on the issue.
Thank you.
And if it's placed on file without prejudice, then it's the same situation as if it passes. You could revisit both a specific proposal and a general conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris?
And, so if we did a committee on the whole, would it, could it be much like we did, where the meeting was noticed, that we did this weekend, where we were able just to dialogue with each other and one another, and just be inclusive and diverse, and, you know, this is a serious, serious thing that we're going to move, that we're going to make here. And I think it would behoove us to have free-flowing input and dialogue, if that's where the council wants to go. So, I'm asking, would we be able to do something like Karen set up, and it's properly noticed as a public meeting, and if there's anybody that wants to come watch us talk, they can?
So, yes, every time the council meets, it's a public meeting, and so the public is able to participate and observe. I think a committee of the whole would be slightly more formal than a retreat, slightly less formal than a council meeting. But the purpose of a committee of the whole is for the body to discuss with itself.
If I could, I would, I think the main difference is, I don't think you could realistically do what the group did on Saturday, as far as splitting up into different groups. You're essentially having four or five different meetings, because then the public can't really observe what the debate is.
Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Thank you. I think that Attorney Haas was leading into where I was going, and so the format of the committee of the whole, could you just briefly set the format for the committee of the whole?
Well, it's basically a committee meeting, you know, sometimes there are committee of the whole meetings where they're structured to have a staff presentation or in-depth discussion, but it is essentially a committee meeting with the president of the council chairing the committee.
Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for maybe the attorney or you, Mayor. So, what I hear you say is, we can be in the committee of the whole, but whatever, say we figure out something, we still have to be in the common council this kind of meeting to approve it. So, my question is, can you schedule a committee of the whole, followed immediately by a common council meeting, kind of like how you go out of closed session and back into, you know, the public meeting to finish?
Yes.
And having actually organized a committee of the whole once quite a few number of years ago, when we were dealing with police issues, the chair, our council president would sit where the mayor is, and there would or would not be various people sitting next to him, I'm not quite sure, but, and then, you know, assuming, you know, not before April, JL would facilitate the meeting. And instead of having to go through the chair, you could talk to each other, and I guess, you know, how would that, so you couldn't break out in different rooms, but you could all do it in one room together. And that would be, it can be really effective, you know, I've seen that. But, you know, the question is, is it add any value to then what we've done here? And that I'm not quite sure about. So, I think we've had a really important discussion here, and would we get more out of a committee of the whole that we're not going to get if we don't do it? I think that's the question people should consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, there, I think, the second time?
Sorry, yeah, just very briefly, I just want to say that, though I will not be supporting this motion, I do sympathize that this is something where all alders should have the equal opportunity to invest in, and do deep dives in each of our subjects, which is very pertinent to this conversation. And it's quite unfortunate that there is a narrative being shoved down our throats that we should be able to do so, regardless of our current financial circumstances. So, I do, however, encourage anyone that is interested in continuing this conversation to bring this up to council leadership, and put it on the agenda as something that we can discuss as an entire body, so, because this is an important issue. And already seeing the decrease in our wages is quite disheartening and gross.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting delaying this, or bringing it back to the body as a whole. This has been on people's minds in meetings at CCEC for months now. We've been delaying it, delaying it, and I think we've had a very robust conversation tonight, and I think it's time for us to make some actions and go ahead and proceed with this. So, I will not be supporting delaying this, or bringing this back to the body of the whole. It has been to the CCEC several times, it's been to common council several times, we spoke about this several times, and I think we're just being repetitive now. So, I'll ask my colleagues not to support delaying this any further, and let's deal with this matter tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I also will not be supporting the motion to refer this to the committee of the whole, but I would, I would say that it would not be a bad idea to try to take that sentiment if the president would agree, and perhaps charge a committee, a president's committee on alder pay, so that we could look into this further. But I think that, and I think there are serious questions and more research could be done. And again, we're talking about the long term. We're not talking about this council, we're talking about a future council. And also responded to some of the structural issues that were mentioned at TFOC repeatedly in their final report. So, I don't know if, how the president would feel about that, but that's something that we can talk about later, about having a special committee, a president's committee that deals with this. But let's vote on Alder Field's amendment, and then get done with our business and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak on the motion to refer. Anticipating disagreement, all those in favor of the motion to refer, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Vitter? Alder Vitter, no. Aldo Wiheli?
Aye.
Aldo Wiheli, aye. Alder Bennett?
No.
Alder Bennett, no. Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Conklin, no. Alder Curry? Very well. Alder Duncan?
No.
Alder Duncan, no. Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Field?
No.
Alder Field, no. Aldo Figaro-Cole?
No.
Aldo Figaro-Cole, no. Aldo Govindarajan?
No.
Aldo Wiger?
No.
Thank you. Aldo Wiger, no. Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Yes.
Alder Harrington-McKinney, aye. Aldo Knox? Sorry, Aldo Knox? Aldo Knox, aye. Aldo Latimer-Burris?
Aye.
Aldo Latimer-Burris, aye. Aldo Madison?
No.
Aldo Madison, no. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford? Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, no. Aldo Miyazee? Aldo Miyazee, aye. Aldo Rommel? Aldo Rommel, no. Aldo Tischler? Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Revere? Aldo Revere, no. Alder Curry? Alder Curry, no. Count five ayes, fifteen nos.
With five ayes, the motion to refer fails. We're back to the Field Amendment. Alder Field, do you want to clarify the numbers, please?
Sure thing, Mayor. So, the new hourly rates for an alder would be fifteen dollars and eighty-seven cents an hour for vice president, seventeen dollars and twelve cents for president, nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Would you like the annual? Okay.
Thank you, Alder. All right, so on the Field Amendment discussion, Alder Bennett?
I know I've spoken before, but I just want to make a very brief comment, that I find it absolutely disgusting that some folks have made a very conscious decision to actively vote to decrease the amount of alder pay to this level. We know that to afford a one-bedroom apartment, you need to make at least twenty dollars an hour in the Madison area. So, please don't reference some BS that is on our city council website, when we obviously have much more up-to-date information about what a livable wage is for everyone in the city of Madison. And while I will begrudgingly vote for this, because unfortunately, my colleagues don't agree with the simple sentiment that we should have a livable wage, I will do so with a different outlook. And the more this debate continues, the more it seems as though folks are willing to put aside what is best for the city, and best for the constituents, and best for what they, the type of service that they should receive for alder's future elections. And to you, I say, congrats on having that privilege, but it's very sad.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Call the question.
Alder, there's one other alder in the queue. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I know I started out the evening saying I would really lecturing us all on with the living wages. Well, I am going to support seventeen eighty an hour. When I reached out to my constituents on my blog and told them that I wanted a range, and I sort of said what it was, I got personal emails, all alders didn't get it, but I got more than, at least a half a dozen, that people said, "That range is reasonable." So, having heard the compelling personal stories, I think I can, seventeen eighty an hour is, I think, a reasonable increase. It's a lot, you know, more than most people get, and I think we have to own that and say to people why it is we think that it's fair that we get that, and other people have talked tonight about that. I do kind of, I was thinking a bit about Alder Bennett's comment about service, you know, are people getting the service they deserve? And when I first thought about this topic, I remember thinking, boy, I would take half that increase and hire another staff person for the council office. Like, let's get another program person to help us do meetings, or let's get another, I don't know, some more people if we need, to help us provide that service. So, you know, I think that's still a conversation that's on the table, you know, that, you know, if we're going to be a part-time body and not get full-time wages, what else do we need to do a good job, given that some of us has day jobs and other important family obligations, and everything else sits on our plate? So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I just want to clarify that what's before us is the Field Amendment to have the wages increased to fifteen eighty-seven an hour. Alder Conklin, a question?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to clarify, so if this doesn't pass, are we back to the seventeen eighty?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right. So, what's immediately before us is the Field Amendment to increase council wages to the equivalent of fifteen eighty-seven an hour, with the related increases for council leadership. This is an eleven-vote item. It amends the underlying motion. If the amend, if this vote is in the affirmative, we will vote on the actual question of pay increases. If this vote is in the negative, we will go back to the Duncan Amendment, which would, the rate would be seventeen eighty an hour, and then we will vote on that. Good? Good. All those in favor of the Field Amendment, fifteen eighty-seven an hour, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vitter? Aldo Vitter, aye. Aldo Wiheli?
No.
Wiheli, no. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Aldo Conklin?
No.
Aldo Conklin, no. Aldo Curry? Aldo Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
No.
Aldo Duncan, no. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aldo Evers, aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Field, aye. Aldo Figaro-Cole?
Aye.
Aldo Figaro-Cole, aye. Aldo Govindarajan?
No.
Aldo Wiger?
Aye.
Wiger, aye. Alder Harrington-McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington-McKinney, no. Aldo Knox? Aldo Knox, no. Aldo Latimer-Burris? Aldo Latimer-Burris abstained. Aldo Madison?
No.
Aldo Madison, no. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford? Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, no. Aldo Miyazee? Aldo Miyazee, no. Aldo Rommel?
No.
Aldo Rommel, no. Aldo Tischler?
No.
Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Revere?
Aye.
I believe we have eight ayes, eleven nos, one abstained.
So, eleven nos, that amendment fails. We are back to the main motion as amended by Alder Duncan, which would increase the alder pay to approximately seventeen eighty an hour, with the related increases for council leadership. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, what's before us is the question of raising the alder pay rates to approximately seven eighty, seventeen eighty an hour. This is a fifteen-vote item. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Vitter?
Aye.
Aldo Vitter, aye. Aldo Wiheli?
Aye.
Aldo Wiheli, aye.
Yes.
Alder Bennett, aye. Aldo Conklin?
Aye.
Aldo Conklin, aye. Aldo Curry?
Aye.
Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Aldo Evers?
Aye.
Aldo Evers, aye. Alder Field?
No.
Alder Field, no. Aldo Figaro-Cole?
Aye.
Aldo Figaro-Cole, aye. Aldo Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aldo Wiger?
Aye.
Aldo Wiger, aye.
No.
Alder Harrington-McKinney, no. Aldo Knox? Aldo Knox, no. Aldo Latimer-Burris? Aldo Latimer-Burris abstained. Aldo Madison?
Aye.
Aldo Madison, aye. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Aldo Miyazee? Aldo Miyazee, no. Aldo Rommel?
Aye.
Aldo Tischler? Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Revere?
Aye.
Revere, aye. Fourteen ayes, let's see, let me make sure I got this right. I believe I have fourteen ayes, five nos, and one abstained.
With fourteen ayes, the motion fails. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements or introduction, additional introductions of items from the floor? President Curry?
Announcement-wise, just want to bring you all's attention to the beautiful Office of the Common Council year in review, and thank our wonderful office staff for compiling to end on a nice note.
Thank you, President Curry. Alder Rommel?
I'd like to move reconsideration. I was on the prevailing, or, can I do that on the losing side?
No, you have to be on the, the...
Someone on the prevailing side should consider reconsidering, because this doesn't, in my opinion.
I, I don't know if this is right.
Alder Bennett?
I'm so sorry for speaking out of order.
We're in announcements or introductions from the floor, Alder Bennett?
I'm responding to what Alder Rommel just...
This is not a time for discussion, Alder Bennett. It's announcements or items from the floor. Aldo Rommel was similarly out of order, but she was trying to make a motion, so she, we allowed her the question. Alder Bennett, do you have an announcement?
Well, I'm sorry, did you not answer her question about if, about reconsideration?
Yes, she can't move reconsideration, because she was on the prevailing side of the vote. I'm sorry, on the failing side of the vote. You have to be on the prevailing side of the vote to move reconsideration. So, you have to have voted no in order to move reconsideration.
Okay, can I move?
There's no... There's no item before us, Alder Bennett. So there's no motions that are in order at this point in time.
Okay, sorry, sorry. So I would have had to have voted no.
If you had voted no, you could have moved reconsideration, but you did not, so there's no motion that's in order from you at this point in time. Thank you, Alder Bennett. Are there any other announcements? Seeing none, Alder Vitter, it's your turn.
Uh, I think there's something.
Alder Field?
I'd move reconsideration of the last motion.
You all are killing me. Alder Field moves consideration of items, reconsideration of item sixty-four. Alder Rummel will second. We're going to stand informal while we determine the correct process here. While we stand informal, Alder Conklin has an announcement.
I do. I just want to say, um, happy twenty-first birthday to my youngest niece today. Happy birthday to you, I love you.
Aw, happy birthday. All right, so the city attorney has determined that a vote on reconsideration at this time is appropriate, and then it just immediately comes back before us. Okay, so a motion to reconsider requires a majority vote, so if we have eleven ayes, the item will be back before us. If the vote fails, then we will move to adjournment. Is there a discussion, is it a discussable motion? Uh, is, sorry, is there a discussion? We don't often reconsider things. Is there a discussion on the motion to reconsider? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of reconsideration, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Vitter?
Aye.
Alder Vitter, aye. Aldo Wohelia?
Aye.
Aldo Wohelia, aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Evers, aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Field, aye. Aldo Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aldo Figaro Cole, aye. Aldo Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aldo Govindarajan, aye. Aldo Weger?
Aye.
Weger, aye. Alder Harrington McKenney?
Alder Harrington McKenney, on the question of reconsideration? I believe that's a no? No.
Very well. Alder Harrington McKenney, no. Aldo Knox?
No.
Aldo Knox, no. Aldo Latimer Burris? Aldo Latimer Burris abstained. Aldo Madison?
Aye.
Aldo Madison, aye. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Aldo Miyazee?
Aye.
Aldo Miyazee, aye. Aldo Rummel?
Aye.
Aldo Rummel, aye. Alder Tischler?
No.
Alder Tischler, no. Aldo Revere?
Aye.
Aldo Revere, aye. Sixteen ayes, three nos, one abstain.
With sixteen ayes, item sixty-four is back before us, and it is in the state in which we last voted on it. So to be a hundred percent clear, what's before us is the main motion as amended by Alder Duncan, which would increase alder pay to approximately seventeen eighty an hour with the related increases for council leadership. That is what is on the floor. Are there questions? Aldo Latimer Burris?
Oh, can I make a comment?
Uh, there's no one else in the queue, so you can move to discussion.
So, you know, what's going to happen is we're going to get more divided, and there's going to be more camping and playing games and all the other stuff. We know that we're not paid enough. I don't know why we couldn't have a committee on the whole, or we got to get it done first, and then we can have it. I'm not here for anybody's camp or political favors or switching or whatnot. I'm like, we're all, and I don't need any eye rolling over it either, I'm just saying. It's a serious issue, and I actually think that we could come together and make real progress. It might even be more money than you could ever think, that you thought you were going to get. But to get, get our way, and then, then there's going to be trashing of certain Alders, and it's all, you know, what they say, one time and call BS. That's what it is, it's going to happen, it's trashing. They didn't want to have it, and they were had this, and they have their houses and everything like that, and da-da-da-da-da. It's not, it's not good, you guys. We're going in the wrong direction.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Mayor, would it be germane for me to move my previous motion again?
Uh, an amendment is in order if you wish to move an amendment.
I move an amendment. Yep. Um, to increase alder pay to fifteen dollars and eighty-seven cents an hour for Alders, which is seventeen dollars, seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-three annually. Do you have the follow-up? Sorry. Okay. And, my apologies. Okay. Uh, and for Vice President, seventeen dollars and twelve cents an hour, and President, nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents an hour. Thank you.
Alder Field moves an amendment to fifteen eighty-seven an hour and the related raises for leadership. Is there a second? Alder Rummel will second. Alder Field, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Wohelia?
Um, what's the difference, the one we voted down to this one?
It's the same motion.
So why do we have to?
Alder Govindarajan?
Just to make sure I have this right, we reconsidered a vote for seventeen dollars and something, and now there's an amendment for fifteen dollars and something.
That's correct.
Okay, would it be proper of me to ask the sponsor of the amendment for an explanation why?
You could ask the room, and if any Alders wish to speak to the issue, they can.
Hey, room, I would really love for an explanation if you might have written this. Thanks. Signed, MGR.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel?
I was just thinking that we would try again, and, you know, when I look at my notes, the, um, the field motion only got, I think, eight votes in favor. And so I guess Aldo Govindarajan's point is well-taken because the seventeen eighty got more, it failed by one vote. So somewhere out there, is there another vote for the seventeen eighty or some more votes if you don't want to pay seventeen eighty? And then, could we then go and agree at some future point with council leadership to have more discussion on do we, how, what other things can we do to improve our capacity and, and help meanwhile get some increase that seems to recognize people's need and some fairness? Or is that just me being the glass is half-full and the rest of you see it the opposite? Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field for the second time on the amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll reiterate a comment from earlier about the city's living wage, which is in ordinance and listed on the web page in an email that I had sent to all Alders earlier this evening around nine forty-five. That specifies that the city's living wage is fifteen eighty-seven an hour.
Thank you, Alder Field. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I've done the math, and I believe it's going to be easier to get votes for fifteen eighty-seven than the very clear no votes for seventeen eighty. And I would, I did the math earlier, when we, we had fifteen votes, including Alder Field's, until he came back and said, when we were looking at the motion, he actually brought it, got it to the point where we're voting on it, and then put an amendment saying he would not support seventeen eighty. So folks, the math is clear. If we want to do anything at all tonight, it's going to be fifteen eighty-two, whether you like it or not. Or it'll go back to thirteen ninety, where it's just the reality. I've counted it, I know what the hard nos are, and if you add Alder Field's no into it, there isn't any changing. So that's the reality, that's, we should keep that in mind as we vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Latimer Burris for the second time on the amendment.
Sorry, can, why, then I would ask, why can't we reconsider committee of the hall with our president leading it, free dialogue, maybe we can come up a solution? Does, does it have to be a winner? Does it have to be a winner? I mean, we're clearly not ready. And it's not delaying it for like fifteen years, it's like maybe a month, and maybe we'll come out the other side and understand. But, I mean, you guys do what you want to do.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Thanks. And I, I, I'm sorry, I'm struggling with email and the server. Can someone please explain to me what is the financial difference between the fifteen dollars and the seventeen dollars? Because I'm hearing fifteen and seventeen, and I'm hearing two dollars. So can someone explain to me what's the difference, like financial difference overall?
Um, so that the total cost of the increase, is that what you're looking for, Alder?
No, I'm looking for the total cost increase difference between the fifteen-dollar amendment and the seventeen-dollar amendment.
Director Schmiedekis, do you have those numbers?
I believe I do, Mayor. Thank you. Alder Bennett, on the seventeen dollar and eighty amendment, the cost in 2025 would be sixty-seven thousand dollars. The cost of the amendment on fifteen eighty-seven an hour would be a thirty-three thousand two hundred dollars. So it's a difference of about thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. I just want to reiterate my previous points and also share that, that thirty-three thousand dollars an hour is not even a full, not even half of a full-time position. So penny-pinching over that when you really should be focusing your efforts on actually solving the financial dilemma that we're facing, if that's the actual priority here and not election issues, just seems ridiculous to me. But I will be supporting this because, as Aldo Evers said, the votes are clear, but I, I think this is gross.
Thank you, Alder. Aldo Govindarajan for the second time?
Attorney Haas, would it be proper of me to ask an Alder a question?
It's, it's out of order.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, Aldo, you can walk over to them and ask them a question if you'd like, but you, you, you have to address your comments to the chair. Thank you. Aldo Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. So purposely staying out of this, because again, my intent here of putting this resolution forward was to have the discussion on the floor. We exhaustively discussed this on the CCEC meetings, it was in our agenda for like, I don't know, maybe three times or something like that. When we asked people who, when we asked people who wanted to be considered for the CCEC, one of the questions we asked was, what are the topics that you are more interested on discussing? So the number one item that came back was alder pay. So we followed the instruction of those that responded, not just the people that participated that became part of the CCEC, but all the people that answered the survey. So that's why we are here tonight, and I appreciate so much the discussions that we're having. I mean, I don't think you should have taken this long, but that's just my personal opinion, so I'm sticking to, to what we have in front of us here. So I, I mean, if I wrote one single blog on this regard, and I put a lot of, I went in, I did a lot of digging on it, so to other, um, to others that were on the, on the council before, noting like, in two thousand and seven was the last time that we got in somewhat, that the others got somewhat of a raise, and that's kind of like a long time ago. Like, we haven't, there's, there has, nothing has been moved from there. When is, to the question as to when is the best time to get a, a, a raise? I don't know. I mean, there's really nobody, nobody's coming with that answer for any of, of us here. I appreciate everyone's feedback, and I understand how hard it is to come to a compromise, I would say, I mean, I don't, I don't even know the word to use, to come, um, to vote for something that your heart is not in it. But I think at this moment, this is just, let's just move forward with the amendment that we have on the floor right now, and let's continue the conversation and see how we can figure out how we can make this more of a process or a procedural thing that is, that works better and that has, is more inclusive. Let's just make the procedure more inclusive and more equitable at the legislative level. But at this moment, let's just, I please ask you to go ahead and, and support the, the amendment from Aldo Field. I don't agree with it, but I will go ahead and vote for it. So again, thank you for giving me the time to speak, and thank you for all the feedback we received tonight.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. What is before us is the field amendment. As a reminder, it is an eleven-vote item, and then we'll return to the main motion, which is a fifteen-vote item. All those in favor of the field amendment, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Vitter?
Aye.
Alder Vitter, aye. Aldo Wohelia?
No.
Wohelia, no. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin?
Come back to me, please.
Very well. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Evers, aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Field, aye. Aldo Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Figaro Cole, aye. Aldo Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aldo Govindarajan, aye. Aldo Weger?
Aye.
Aldo Weger, aye. Alder Harrington McKenney?
Alder Harrington McKenney, no.
No. Alder Harrington McKenney, no. Thank you very much for that. Aldo Knox? Aldo Knox, no. Aldo Latimer Burris?
Stained.
Aldo Latimer Burris abstained. Aldo Madison?
Aye.
Aldo Madison, aye. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford?
Very begrudging, no. Yes.
Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, a very begrudging, aye. Aldo Miyazee?
No.
Aldo Miyazee, no?
Yes.
Okay. Aldo Rummel?
Aye.
Aldo Rumel, aye. Aldo Tischler? I'm sorry, say again? Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Revere? Aldo Revere, aye. My math has failed me again. Let's see. I believe, oh, I'm sorry, Alder Conklin? Alder Conklin, aye. Show fourteen ayes, five nos, one abstained.
With fourteen ayes, the amendment passes. We're back to the main motion, which is to raise Alder pay at this point in time to the equivalent of fifteen eighty-seven an hour, with the rest of the language intact and the related raises for council leadership. So, further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, as a reminder, this is a fifteen-vote item. Everybody's clear what we're voting?
I'm sorry, can you, can you remind me? So, this is voting on the seventeen-dollar?
No.
Amendment?
This is voting on the main motion as amended by Alder Field, which is to increase Alder pay to the approximate rate of fifteen eighty-seven an hour. It's a fifteen-vote item.
Okay, yeah, all right.
All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you, Alder Vitter. Alder Vitter, aye. Aldo Wohelia? Wohelia, no. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin? Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry? Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan? Alder Duncan, aye. Aldo Evers?